Good afternoon, everybody. I will get our work session, our virtual meeting held via WebEx of September 10th, 2020. I'll call our meeting to order. And the topic of our work session today is the 2021 budget presentation, which is our last kind of session before our levy certification at the next city council meeting. And before I pass it on to City Manager Rodriguez, I do just want to extend thanks to every single department head for being at this meeting, for preparing everything you're doing in the midst of COVID, working on the CARES funding and getting ready for budget on top of just running the city every single day is quite a bit right now. And I'm, I thank you all for being here today and preparing everything today. So I will pass it to our City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate the thank yous. 2020 has been a tough year, as everyone knows, and it was a, it was a tough budget to put together, both the 2020 revised and the 2021. The uncertainty of the pandemic's path and the financial impacts has really required us to continue to modify our services, and I expect the same until there's a vaccine and the economy settles. The budget assumes we will mostly be back to business in 2021, but we know we're going to have to be flexible. We've rolled with the punches this year, so we know we can do it. Also, directors have identified possible cuts if needed. More serious financial impacts are, are possible this year, like LGA cuts. Director Regis has built reserves for years for that kind of possibility. The CARES funding has also reimbursed us for costs in 2020 to deal with the pandemic and has allowed us some more resiliency going into 2021. However, significant and sustained cuts to LGA would require us to make more deep cuts in the long term. Directors did try to deliver lean budgets without sacrificing important priorities and investments in those priorities. Predetermined labor costs also made that difficult. We will have more options on that in 2021. We'll be able to adjust to economic conditions because we'll have our contracts open in '21. We've added several positions in the last few years. I believe they were and are needed. However, I think we've got a good team in place or will have when we add the, if, if you recommend this budget, if you approve this budget, we will have a team in place that we can deliver on our priorities. And so we will not be adding positions at the pace that we have. And in fact, we continue to have a soft hiring freeze and we're evaluating any open positions. Those are the really broad highlights for the budget, and I defer to Director Regis to provide more of an overview. And then, of course, the directors will provide the details of their own budgets. I also want to say thank you to Director Regis and all the directors and their staff who work on the budget and have been working on the budget pretty continually. This year's process wasn't a one and done. We did it several times, and that caused a lot of extra work. So a big thank you, and I will let Director Regis take it from here.
All right, Chris Regis, by instructor. I'm going to try to share my screen here, see if I can do it correctly. I don't think this is the one I want. Why isn't the other one showing up? Let's see here. Here we go. There we go. All right, 2021 budget and tax levy. We're all well aware of this, so some of our timetable and key events, our budget study session tonight, we'll adopt the preliminary levy on September 22nd. We'll have our truth and taxation hearing. Well, that date's to be determined. I was hoping to have it the second meeting in November, but the dates didn't work out for that, so we need to come up with a new date, and we'll have that date by September 22nd. It'll be in the staff report for that meeting. And then we need to certify our final levy on December 8th. Some of the key issues for 2020 and 2021, property taxes remain or continue to be our primary funding source within the general fund. Within our 2021 budget of revenues, we had approximately $2 million of local government aid budgeted in there. In the 2020 budget, we have CARES federal grant, which approximately $2.2 million is within the general fund. We do have a debt service tax levy for the 2028 bonds that will incur in 2021 of $197,000. I did do some reduction of some of the debt service tax levies for 2021 of $150,000. We'll do that for one year. That kind of offsets that 2028 debt service levy. We have a police and fire personnel cost increases. We have a lot of young officers and young firefighters working through their steps, so the increase is actually more than 3% in personnel for those, those two departments because of that. We do have an increase in staff positions. We have two new positions in 2020 and one new position in 2021. We have an embedded mental health worker in, I think it's with the Public Safety Department who are sharing the cost with that with the DINA. We are planning on purchasing body camera equipment in 2020, and we do have an $830,000 rolling stock equipment tax levy, which is a $15,000 increase from the prior year from 2020. Let's look at a history of our state aid slash local government aid. You can see down at the bottom there, 2020, we had 2.3 million. We are realizing a reduction in aid for 2021 of approximately $364,000, and that's due primarily to the formula and the way it works and the way our market value increases impacted that formula and which caused our decrease. Our capital reserve fund, our current balance is 4.6 million. I'm estimating that the 2020 year end balance will be approximately 6.6 million. That's basically, I'm basing that on that we will get all of our LGA for 2020. If we don't, then that amount will decrease, but I'm estimating at 6.6. I calculated that estimate about three different times and finally came up with one I thought was reasonable, and that's what I came up with is a 6.6. Some of the uses of the funds of this reserve in the past in 2015 and 2019, we bought down right-of-way bonds or bonds for Portland Avenue and Lyndale Avenue. We're using budgeted transfers in 2021, approximately $353,000. If needed, we do some cash flow transfers through the central garage and IT funds for the equipment purchases, and then also we fund some general fund purchases and then we pay those purchases back over time over like five to seven years. Just to look at revenue comparison between taxes and intergovernmental revenues, we go back to 2001, which I kind of consider a benchmark year for local government aid for the city. Taxes at that time were 38% of general fund revenues, while intergovernmental revenues were 39%. If we go forward 20 years, taxes are now at 70%, and intergovernmental revenues are now 13%. So there's been quite a shift over those 20, over that 20-year time period. Now, if we just look strictly at local government aid, which is a major component of intergovernmental revenues, last year in 2020, it was at 5.46%, and 2021, it's at 7.48%. And if we go back to 2001, our benchmark year, LGA accounted for 24% of general fund We get to our 2021 proposed gross tax levy. It's at 23.9 million. That's a 5.5% increase over the 2020 levy. Some of the components of that levy are the general fund levy, just over 19 million, the equipment levy of $830,000, and an EDA levy of $540,000 gives us our base levy of 20.3 million. Then we need to add in our debt service levy of 3.5 million and our tax abatement levy of $54,000, and that gives us a total levy, again, of 23.9 million and a 5.5% increase over the 2020 levy. Just kind of a look, a 10-year look at our gross tax levy history. I went and just calculated, see what the average is over those 10-year periods. It's about 3.9% in average increase from 2012 to 2021. If you average all those increases up, it's about 3.9%. Looking at our total general fund budget, it's at 26.7 million. That's a little over 5% increase from the 2020 adopted and a little less than 1% increase from the 2020 revised budget. And here's a look at our general fund revenues by the revenue categories. You can see a significant increase in intergovernmental revenue from 2020 adopted to 2020 revised, and that's primarily due to the CARES funding that we're recognizing. It's approximately $2.2 million. And then you can see it, another increase in the 2021 from 2020 adopted intergovernmental revenue, and that's primarily due to an increase in local government aid being recognized. We do have a decrease in charges for services in the 2020 revised, and that's primarily due to pandemic and the effect on deputy registrar revenues and also the recreation revenues and things like that, and also a decrease in fines and forfeitures again due to the pandemic. If we look at comparison between 2020 and 21 general fund revenues, you can see everything's fairly comparable, a little increase in taxes from 65 to 70 and then a decrease in intergovernmental revenue from 19 to 13%. And that's primarily due to the CARES, CARES revenue in 2020 and none in 2021. So that's primarily that decrease there, but everything else is fairly comparable, not a lot of change. If we go back to 2011, everything's very comparable here. Taxes are the same. Intergovernmental revenues shows a slight increase, and then the transfers will show a decrease, but everything else is fairly comparable in terms of different revenue Okay, why didn't I, there we go. Look at general fund expenditures by department. Everything's fairly comparable here. The only real big change is in transfers in 2020 revised. We're going from 220,000 transfer out to 1.4 million, and again, that's based on an estimate of a larger-than-normal surplus due to our CARES revenues and stuff. We're transferring that money out into that capital reserve fund. If we look at proposed expenditures from 2021 to 2020, you can see everything is really very comparable from year to year. The only difference here is in transfers, and again, that's due to the, the CARES money that's being transferred out in 2020 versus 2021 where there will be no CARES money to be transferred out. If we look at our, our three largest departments, which are public safety, public works, and fire, A equals 75% or 20 point, a little over 20 million of the general fund budget. If we look at our total general fund tax levy revenue of 18.6 million, I mean, that doesn't even cover those three departments alone. I always liked the slide. It's just pretty amazing that that, that's the way it works. If we go back to 2011 to compare it to 2021, if we look at the general fund departments, if we combine public safety and fire, we're looking at, you know, a slight increase of 2%. Public work shows a small decrease and a slight increase in a recreation of 1%. So very comparable from 2011 to 2021 of our general fund expenditure. Just look at general fund history and average increase of approximately 3.35%. Fairly steady, steady increase from year to year, a little bit of a spike from 2019 to 20R, and it's, again, it's primarily due to the CARES money. Looking at our 2000 full-time regular positions, we got 202 full-time positions, that's an increase of, of, I think it's two positions in 2020 and then one new position in 2021. Now, if we look at our proposed estimated impact of our tax levy on properties, we look at a $225,000 property. If there's no market value increase between 2020 and 2021, we're looking at approximately $16 increase. If we look at an estimated market value increase of 1.8%, we're looking at approximately $38 increase. Now, the market probably increased at 1.8. That's the number or the figure that I was given by the Hennepin County Assessors Office, so hopefully that's accurate. If you look at a $250,000 property from 2021 with no market value increase, no market value change, we're looking at an $18 increase. And if we do factor in that market value change, we're looking at approximately a $42 For $275,000 property, no market value change, we're looking at almost a $20 increase, and then if there is a market value increase, we're looking at 46, approximately $46. If we look at our 2021 capital improvement budget, the total budget is $28.8 million. Some of the major projects are 77th Street, pavement management program, utility projects, and several park play equipment replacements are within that budget. And also included in that budget are rolling stock equipment purchases. Total cost exceeds $1 million. We only have a general fund tax levy to supplement that of $830,000. So if needed, there may be some central garage and IT cash flow transfers in to help offset that, those cash expenses for the purchase of that equipment. Some of those, some of the purchases include a new dump truck, an aerial truck, three detective hybrid vehicles, a VAC trailer for the utilities department, and obviously computer network infrastructure and equipment. So then where are we going from here? Well, I know there's significant right-of-way projects on the horizon, specifically the closest is 65th Street reconstruction. That's going to require debt funding. That's probably going to be a rather significant debt issuance. We do have recreation infrastructure needs, anywhere from a new Wood Lake building out there to park play fix, park, I can't speak, park play feature needs and things like that. These all create pressure on our tax, you know, we already have a large debt service levy due to the prior, prior issues of debt for right-of-way projects. Some of the things we need to do is just continue our long-term financial planning, keep, keep up with that. We need to maintain our current level of quality service that our departments provide to our residents. We also need to do our best to contain our operating costs, and that's, that's going to be hard in this environment, but I think the city has done a really good job of doing that in the past. And that is all I have. If there's any questions or anything, I know we've seen a lot of this stuff previously and things like that. As Katie mentioned, we've been going over this for a while just because of the pandemic and stuff like that, but if there's any questions or anything, I will try to answer them.
Any questions from council members? I'm just trying to see if I get everybody here. No, looks like there's no questions.
Okay. Then I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Wait, Councilmember Chapman, you have a question.
Thank you, Mayor. And, yeah, thank you, Director Regis, for always being incredibly well-prepared, but just like City Manager Rodriguez mentioned, we just recognize that this is extraordinary circumstance and task and challenge on extraordinary circumstance and new challenges. So I'm, I'm grateful for, for the work. And I wonder if you could just take a moment and talk a little bit about what the budget looks like long-term as we're looking out, and maybe we cover that a little later, and I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but just as a part of our conversation, as you're, can you remind us kind of where we're looking at in the next, in the next several years with our budget?
Oh, I think there's a couple issues we have out there. Some of it has to do with local government aid. You know, I don't know with the pandemic and the state's projected budget deficit and things like that. You know, there's, you know, I think, I'm hoping that we'll get our second half this year, but going forward into 2021, you know, the first half will be in July, the second half will be in December. You know, if the economy doesn't improve and things like that, I'm not sure if we're going to get any or all or a portion of it. And the hard part about that is, you know, if they, you know, we won't know until next summer if we're going to get it or not, and we've already set our levy, and that creates a large hold-in in our budget, and that's, that's something that we have, that happened, you know, 10 years ago, you know, with the housing crisis and things like that. So that makes it tough. Hopefully they'll let us know sooner rather than later if that's going to happen, but the way the legislature is acting right now, I don't know if they're really communicating with each other and stuff, so there's that issue. We also have some right-of-way projects out there that's put pressure on the tax levy because if we, you know, we, we have to, you know, we use tax levy to support that debt, to pay that debt, so there's going to be some issues there. And then, you know, just what the economy is going to do and what the pandemic is going to do. So I mean, going forward, you know, in the immediate future, things might be pretty tight. If the pandemic, we get a vaccine, the pandemic goes away, the economy recovers, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's all good news, but depending on when the economy recovers. So I don't know if I have a clear-cut answer for you on that. I mean, I, I think 2021 is going to be, be hard. 2022 may be a little easier, but still going to be difficult. And then 2023, that's probably where, if we do 65th Street in 2022, that's probably where that tax levy is going to hit. That's going to be a huge tax levy hit because it's going to be a significant debt issue and stuff. And then, then 2024, we, it depends if we issue any more debt or anything like that and what the state of, of LGA is and things like that. So that's kind of a, kind of my best shot at guessing.
Let me, let me simplify. Thank you for, for that. Let me just simplify it. If, if we experienced a downturn similar to 2008, just as a benchmark, we know how challenging that was. How, how, if you consider how we were positioned to address that versus how we're positioned now to address something that would be of a similar magnitude, how well-positioned are we to address?
Well, we're in a little better shape now because beginning around 2010, 2011, I forget the year, we quit counting on LGA. We started reducing our budget LGA. We started building up a reserve that I talked about in one of the slides. So that's, you know, so we've got a reserve built up, but the reserve is finite, you know, there's, you know, for 2021, we're budgeting the full amount of LGA. So, you know, there's really no new money going into that. I mean, but I've estimated that some of the CARES surplus will go into that, and if we do get our second half, there'll be some LGA going into it, hopefully give us that 6.6 million, but, you know, it all, you know, so we'll have to ride that, that reserve out. If they, they cut LGA mid-year next year, something like that, then we can, we can use that reserve to revise the budget and put that money in there to balance the budget again, and then I'm assuming that they will allow us to budget for any LGA cuts in the prior, in the subsequent year, or, you know, be able to levy for those cuts, because that's what they allowed us to do in the prior, prior, you know, prior issues that we had with the state trickle-down effect on the cities and stuff like that. And that's a council decision whether we want to actually levy for those cuts, because then that will boost your levy way up, is what it'll do. So, but then, then we have funding going forward then each year to, to cover that and stuff, so, but that's, that's a policy decision to make whether we want to do that or not.
Well, thank you for explaining and reminding us of that, and thank you for making those, those hard decisions in, in surplus years that kind of steel us for, for moments like this.
Thank you, Councilmember Chapman and Director Regis. Are there any other questions from council members, or can we move on to the next? Councilmember Whalen.
Just a quick comment. Is it still our, and I can't remember if the year is lined up perfectly or not, is it still our intention to try and line up the debt impact of the 65th Street reconstruction? Does that coincide with when the Best Buy TIF district finalizes, or is that sort of hard to predict?
I'm not exactly sure of when the Best Buy district goes off, but right now, I think we'll issue the debt for 65th Street in 2022, and then the levy will be for 2023.
So this is John Stark, Community Development Director. The, the end of a TIF district isn't as definite as you think. As it starts getting closer, I would say it cannot continue any past 2025 or 2026, one or the other. Every year that goes by, we evaluate the, the commitments, the financial commitments of the TIF stream and determine whether we need to look at closing it down early. We have closed down many TIF districts early. So like I said, at least 2025, 2026 at the very longest, it could be as early as 2023 or 2024.
Okay, thank you.
City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, remember that when we decertify TIFs, it adds to our tax base, which is part of the formula for LGA. So it will, I mean, LGA is designed so that as the city's tax base grows, then it is reduced. So we'll also have those impacts. It's a very complicated formula. We're, we're working with Ellers. We now know that there's a projection that we can get earlier in the year, but we are also going to, we're going to have to do a little bit more sophisticated analysis on that going forward.
Thank you, Director Stark and City Manager Rodriguez. Any other questions from council? Nope. All right, I think we can move on to the next portion then of the presentation. Looks like you're still on mute, City Manager, but we can see your screen.
I'm having a hard time getting to slideshow for some reason.
City Manager, if you look at the bottom, by 86%, you can click on that.
I'm just going to go with it with this. I'm taking too much time. So I, for Legislative Executive, there are the four divisions. Mayor, Council, it's your budget, and the other agencies, the City Manager Budget and Legal. For most of the budgets, they are pretty flat, 2% to 3% increases. The City Manager Budget, however, is, has a significant increase because we are adding the Equity Coordinator position in 2020, and then that will continue in 2021. For the City Council Budget, in 2020, we did the community survey. We funded the community survey from that budget, and then we will also be doing strategic planning in that budget in 2021. We have also added that, I hired an equity consultant to begin doing that training for staff and council and commissions, and then also looking at policy and procedure changes. For other agencies, we do this every year. We actually contract with nonprofits, and we've been doing about $70,500 each year, and we continue to do it at that level, or plan to continue to do it at that level for And then for the City Manager's Budget, we, of course, the City Manager, we do very few things on our own. We're always partnering with all the other departments or some of the other departments, depending on the project. So we've been leading the staff team response to COVID. We are, we're directing the consultant to lead the equity and inclusion work. We've also, we're working on that coordinator position and hiring that, and then working on the census has been a big project for us in 2020. The legal division is just what it sounds like. It's all of our, our legal services, and that's all I have for my budget if you have any questions for me.
Any questions from council members? And I'll just quick say, council members, when a staff have, when staff has their screen up and they're sharing it, and if you do have a question, please just go ahead and state your name and share that you have a question, because I can't see everybody's screen, so I can't tell if your hand is up or not, but I'll do my best. So does anybody have a question about this budget?
A quick one from Councilmember Whalen.
Go ahead, yep.
I was just curious, I couldn't... Um, I was just curious, I couldn't remember how, how expensive the strategic planning process is. Um, which budget does that end up going into and how much is that? I know that's only over a few years.
Uh, good question. So, um, it is in the council budget, and we're spending about $5,000 this year, and we anticipate spending about $20,000 next year. And that's, it's not just the strategic planning too. It'll be in community engagement and developing those key performance indicators and um, hopefully working on a dashboard so that we can track our progress.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question.
Yep. Go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
Uh, are we gonna have, are we gonna be able to use all of the CARES money? Or, or, because we don't want to give any, any money back if we don't have to. We should, we still have till November to do this, right?
Yes, um, good question, Councilmember. Um, we uh, took quite a bit of time to estimate our costs. Right now, we believe that we have enough eligible costs that we've already incurred and project to incur through November. But in addition to that, we, we do plan to have additional assistance to small businesses and additional assistance to BEP. Um, the additional assistance to BEP are another nonprofit, so food and rental assistance for our community. Um, that may not be before the November date, like, likely will not be before the November date. Um, it, because we know those needs will continue into 2021. So the answer is, we expect we will have enough to uh, ask for reimbursement, or will we have the funding to, um, to keep the full 2.745 million?
Well, I think, I think Richfield's done a, a hell of a good job on this COVID thing, and it just, uh, and that's something I really appreciate that, that, that you've um, made happen, Katie. So, we've got to continue to do our best as, as, as best we can.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Um, and like I said, it is always a team effort. There are a lot of folks working a lot harder on this than I am. So thank you.
Any additional questions? All right. I think we're good to go and moving to the next um, department. Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question, or one reminder, we're hearing some background noise occasionally, so if you're not speaking, if you can keep your microphone off.
Okay. I'm up next. Pam Dimitrenko, Administrative Services Director. So, um, got my screen up here. Okay, great. Uh, let's see here. From the beginning. There we go. Administrative Services. So Administrative Services Department, I have several divisions. Some of them are General Fund Division. That's Administration, which is essentially my position. Um, Human Resources, and then City Clerk and Deputy Registrar. And then the other um, divisions um, have um, separate funding sources, internal service funds. Um, that's uh, I, Information Technologies, um, the Building Services Fund. We've got, I also oversee the um, Risk Management Self-Insurance Fund, and then Communications. Um, those positions and that work is um, financed through the Cable Fund. So, um, for, I think the main story behind the budget um, here is that there's actually a reduction from the um, uh, 2020 budget, adopted budget to the 2021 proposed of a, almost 6%. You'll see there's uh, quite a bit of difference in the Admin um, Division, and that, frankly, that's because um, the Finance Department assumed its share of the utility services costs associated with its building usage. Previously, the Admin Serve Division um, covered that for both Finance and Admin Serve. So now Chris is taking that on. I think you'll see that reflected in his budget. And that does account for a decrease in my budget. And then there is a decrease in City Clerk. Um, you know, we, um, she's actually down in Deputy Registrar, we're operating uh, with a one less staff person who left um, right around the time that, you know, we were dealing with the COVID um, in June, and we haven't staffed back um, that position yet, but we are intending to. So you'll see that as we continue to bring more services back to um, Deputy Registrar. But uh, overall, um, there's a decrease in the budget. So just a quick look at the expenditure history here. Really, the department have leveled off. They reflect cuts and savings that we've made to respond to COVID and anticipated budget issues. Last year, there was um, some changes in staffing in motor vehicle. We added a full-time employee there and a couple part-time, so that's why you saw the spike. But um, now we, now we've leveled off. Revenue history, of course, this is revenue generated from Deputy Registrar. Um, you know, but we had hoped that we were gonna hit about a million dollars in revenue in 2020. I think that's the story I told you last year at this time. Um, and then, of course, COVID has really changed all that. Um, one, you know, source of revenue for us that's really decreased is passports. Um, right now, we're only taking passports by appointment only, four to five a day. And we used to, um, we used to have 30 to 40 passport transactions a day. And in addition to the passport transactions, there's um, a lot of uh, the passport photos. And those are typically, that's a $15 transaction, and Beth was reminding me that's, we usually did about 25 to 30 pa, um, photos as well. So, um, it, it's, it's been, you know, obviously, we've seen a decline in revenue, but we are rebounding. You know, we've made a lot of adjustments, and we, and Beth um, really does hope that we can get back, you know, um, to pre-COVID levels in 2021. So here's just a comparison of revenue and expenditure. And again, you'll see the dip in revenue for 2020 revised. Um, and don't for, revised, and don't forget, we had a two-week shutdown even, immediately per the Governor's Executive Order, and then a gradual reopening. So again, we, we're hoping, the plan is to bring passports back to more normal levels in 2021, and um, the revenues generated from Deputy uh, Registrar do cover the department expenditures. So kind of budget highlights really quick. Um, I, we talked about this actually at the council meeting the other night, when you approved the health insurance um, premium rate renewals for next year. We had a 3.8% rate increase overall, which is extraordinary, actually, in this, um, these times. I continue to serve in the Logis Insurance Committee. I have for about a dozen years now, so we have good representation on that board. Uh, we did launch Enriching Leadership Academy for our, you know, new um, leaders. Um, that has taken a bit of a break as we focus on COVID, but we do intend to um, continue with that, and that, we had a couple really good sessions, so really positive feedback. I did want to point out too, under um, Admin Division, we had been planning pre-COVID to do a classification, a compensation study, actually for 2020. Um, these studies are pretty expensive, like around $40,000 to $60,000 to do a study. We haven't done one in the time that I've been with the city, so really long time. And it's really important for pay equity purposes that we, that we do this type of study, um, because there's a savings in this budget related to what I was talking about with the utility service charges now being assumed by Finance. If we have time, if we can handle it, I, I would like to proceed with doing a study if we can in 2021. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, otherwise, Human Resources, been really busy again, working with exec. Yes?
Uh, I wanted to ask about this, um, enriching Leadership Academy. Is that the same as what, um, Neil did last year?
Uh, Neil, no, oh, sorry. Yeah, Councilmember Garcia, no, this is separate. So Neil, um, that was for residents. Um, yeah, Richfield, yeah, Richfield U. Uh, so that was put on for our residents. The Enriching Leadership Academy is for our employees. And it's to help build their leadership skills.
Wonderful. But you know, the, the one for the, for the citizens, is that gonna happen again this year?
Um, you, you know, I don't think we're gonna be able to do it this year. Um, obviously, we may have to pivot and talk about if we can do it virtually. And um, you know, Neil's been super busy with um, a lot of things going on, so yeah, I think what we'll try to do um, is see if we can revive it for 2021. It's a lot of work, and since we can't do it in person, we really think we need to, you know, ideally would, but it's best to do it in person.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so back to Human Resources, we are also working um, to uh, recruit and then onboard a new Equity and Inclusion Coordinator. Also been really busy just responding to COVID. I mean, there's just so many laws and regulations and everything to, and uh, employee leaves um, that we've been managing. And Krista's doing a great job with that. And the one um, thing that I, that also falls within Human Resources, just want to make you aware of, um, we are um, putting an additional $5,000 into our REAP Fund for 2021. It been at $10,000 for at least 10 years. And that is a fund that provides employees who are um, taking classes that are job-related, um, to get some level of tuition reimbursement. It's not significant, but it's helpful. Um, and we have a lot of um, police officers, now firefighters, because um, during the last negotiations with our firefighters, they want to be able to um, get some assistance for non-accredited training. So this is gonna allow them to also utilize this fund.
That's a big fund.
Yes, it's, it's really utilized, uh, staff appreciated, and honestly, there, I, I, you know, like Public Works uses it to send their people through a program, and, and it just, I think people, I think our employees feel like it's, um, they appreciate that we value them and trying to um, help assist with their professional development.
Absolutely.
Uh, for City Clerk, just a couple highlights. Uh, well, I held a safe and successful primary election. Um, again, boy, these are, you know, just strange, difficult, challenging times. And Beth and the election judges are doing amazing jobs. So then, of course, now getting ready for the general election. They've been using this new election program to train their election judges online. That couldn't have come at a better time, frankly. I already mentioned that Deputy Registrar really, did a great job pivoting um, after COVID and successfully modified to continue to serve our customers. Interestingly, um, they answered over 12,000 calls when we were closed for those two weeks. This, they have really um, just stepped up. I, I just can't say enough about that staff. Um, and now they're getting ready to train on the new motor vehicle titling system that's replacing Minlars. And that's gonna go live in November, so they're busy with that. And um, also implementing a new motor vehicle system for um, us to be able to recover. Um, we had a lot of bad checks um, during the three years of Minlars, and it was several thousand dollars um, uh, in lost funds. So this new system's gonna help with that. Self-insurance, risk management. So this fund um, accounts for claims related to workers' comp, unemployment, property insurance, dental, flex benefits. Um, the fund does fluctuate depending on the number and scope of claims that are paid out each year. Chris is very conservative in how he manages this, uh, which is much appreciated. Um, we've planned for a 3% rate increase for both property liability and workers' comp for 2021. But honestly, the good news, um, when we got the renewal for property liability, we, there was a reduction of almost 9% in that premium um, due to improvement in our loss experience. Uh, so that was fantastic news for us. Um, and we have now purchased cybersecurity coverage. That's an additional coverage um, that is extremely important, especially given that now we have more employees um, working remotely, and we've implemented a mobile device policy to, to um, again, make sure our network is secure. IT, well, they've been amazing as well. Um, of course, spend a lot of time responding to COVID, um, providing technology and training on this new technology for our staff, for you, uh, councils, so that we could have these um, virtual public meetings. Um, in their budget, um, it's reflected in the 2020 revised. They are planning to spend just over $258,000 on COVID-related technology in 2021, um, to be reimbursed through the CARES Act Fund. Uh, they have been creating um, new applications in-house, whether that's electronic invoicing, um, time cards, and they're improving efficiencies for us that are um, just, you know, we're using every day. They're now helping out um, with uh, the development of a new agenda management system, which is related to the agendas that we uh, put together for the City Council. Uh, last year, you had approved um, an additional IT tech position for this division, since they are so incredibly busy. But um, with COVID, just didn't have the opportunity to bring that person onboard, so we've delayed it. And we will, um, we plan to uh, recruit for that position in early 2021. Another big um, project is we will be upgrading and replacing servers in 2021, and that's to help keep up with all the technology we have. And the other thing is, they did take on oversight of the audiovisual equipment. Um, that's in the council chambers, our conference rooms. They've completed an audit, and we've now got a annual maintenance agreement with a vendor, so we're feeling pretty good that we've got this finally under control too. Um, and then Communications and Engagement. Um, well, that's uh, Neil and Kate Acheson, who do an amazing job, and also, we have our video um, tech person who's been also helping out a lot during COVID, doing a lot of the videos for recreation. So they've been really busy this year, helped with that community-wide survey, but then also created that um, specific COVID-19 survey that we put out for residents. Done a lot of mailings. Um, we've got um, a monthly newsletter they put together. So they are continuing to, to do amazing work. Um, and you know, it's a, when you look at our other um, communities, uh, we are very small communication staff, and I can't say enough about the good work they do. They have also been helping with the 2020 census and a lot, of course, election awareness campaigns. Um, Neil's been working very hard um, to get the new city website um, up and running, so that's gonna happen I hope by late fall here. Um, and so we'll have a new website. And then finally, Building Services, Dave and his crew. Dave, um, they took over responsibility for the maintenance of the community center this year. We're really trying to centralize maintenance now, um, for most of the buildings um, within the city. Dave, he, he uh, does a great job watching, uh, watching the budget. There, for the interior remodel of Wine and Spirits Liquor Store, we saved about a $75,000 by doing a lot of that work internally. He um, negotiated with each vendor to get the cost down for that project, including flooring and new shelving, and then they even did the painting of the beams. Um, and of course, he's been helping every department um, to provide COVID mitigation, whether it's putting up all the Plexiglas in the liquor stores and at our DepReg and the other customer service um, counters. Um, and we are anticipating some costs now that the municipal center is almost 10 years old, including, uh, we do need to seal coat the parking lot. Um, so that's gonna be coming up in the near future. And uh, so that uh, that's my budget. Anna, stand for any questions?
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Um, oh, Councilmembers, do you have a question?
Sure.
Great.
You said the Communications Budget, the revenue is mostly coming through the cable funds and fees. Do we anticipate that's gonna remain stable, or is that a worry that we're gonna have to replace it with something else in the future?
So, um, and I'll let Chris jump in if he wants to, you know, um, there, there have been changes, because that's through the uh, cable rider, friend, franchise fees that we collect, and those have been reduced. We're anticipating like, perhaps up to 25% reduction with that. So we have our So we have our eye on that, because it pays for the, our staff, our communication staff, as well as any of the AV equipment, and also some of the other, like our Everbridge system, so some of the websites. So we do have a lot of costs that we cover with that fee, and we do have an eye on it. And we were talking, as a matter of fact, about just what kind of changes we might have to be considering probably next year, anticipating, anticipating this. And I don't know if Director Regis wants to say anything more about that?
No, I mean, right now, I think if you were to look at it, I think it isn't a deficit spending situation right now. The revenue moves aren't covering the costs, and that's basically a change because of the change in the SEC rules with franchise fees and things like that, where our franchise fees, like Pam said, have dropped by about 25% and things like that. Prior to that, the fund was very healthy and things like that. But now with the increased costs, the increased personnel in there, it is, it is a concern. We will probably have to make some changes. We just need to determine what we need to do to make those changes.
Any other questions or comments from councilmembers?
Thank you. I was going to ask the, I think it was 280,000 or so of the CARES money that's going toward IT purchases, does that get us to a point? I know we've had the conversation where not, not everyone who's working from home has a city laptop they can use. Does that address that completely? Or does that get us partway there? Or like, is that going to be an additional cost we need to keep accounting for in future years to get to the full kind of hardware needs?
Yeah, Councilmember Whalen, yeah, good question. Actually, this will help significantly. I think it will. I mean, then the number of laptops that we are able to purchase with this 258,000 roughly is going to get us, I think, most everyone that's working remotely will now be able to have a city laptop when they finally get all distributed. Of course, it takes time once we get them in to get them set up and get them distributed to all of our staff. But I think it will get us basically there, if not close to. And, and also, you know, IT has been, for those of us who have PCs, or desktops, I should say, you know, they always have a plan to turn those over, and, and, and I think it's like on a four-year rotation. So now what we're going to be doing is, a lot of staff are going to have these laptops with a docking station instead. And so there was already money anticipated for desktops that'll now just be able to go towards these laptops. But I think this is going to put us in a really good position to have people that are working remotely with a city laptop.
Perfect. Thank you. And then one other quick question. Not in too much depth, but could you say a bit more, the study you were talking about? I forget the name of it. I didn't quite understand what that was for or what it accomplishes.
Sure. I think you're referencing the Compensation and Classification Study. Yes. So, you know, we have like the Management Compensation Plan, the General Services Compensation Plan, for example. And the plan has, you know, there's different, so there's different percentage, there's differences between each step in a pay plan and then between each pay grade. And the study would bring in a consultant to do a thorough study of what each position, you know, what does each position do? And then is the pay at the rate that is comparable to other similarly sized metro area cities? Making sure that we are aligned with them, and that also it takes into consideration pay equity in terms of our female employees equitably compared to our male employee groups, especially we have male-dominated groups still in terms of like Public Works workers, firefighters, police officers. I mean, we're trending, you know, that's, that's turning a better trend. So what this does, it, it sets us up to make sure that we have a system that is equitable and that is competitive with other cities of our size. And we haven't had one done. So right now, for example, a lot of times, if we are creating a position and we're trying to look at where they fit into a pay plan, you know, we're kind of doing that work on our own. We may reach out and ask some of the other cities. We may work with the League of Minnesota Cities, but it's not, you know, it's kind of an art more than a science. This is then, this study would be more of the science approach. And really, most cities do these. They try to do them at least once every 10 years or so. And we just, we haven't done one in, like I said, I, I think like 20 years. So it's a big project. It takes a lot of time. And the ultimate result is some, some positions might move within the pay grade, either up or down. And so you can appreciate that the dynamics that are, you know, what that creates can be challenging. But also, it just ensures that we have, like I said, we're paying the positions at the right rate for the job they do.
Thank you. That's super helpful. And yeah, I agree. If we, we are able to do that, that sounds really important to be doing.
City, Councilmember Garcia, did you have a question? I thought I might have heard you speak.
I just, I just wanted to say to Pam that Dave Conrad does one heck of a good job. You know, he's, he's, we walk into, into the municipal building, and everything seems to always be running smooth, looking good. And, and you know, and now that he's going to take over the responsibility of the community center, you know, I think that's, that's another hat. He's, he's trying to win, you know, Superman, super, the city Superman contest. And, and I think he's heading the right way, because he does a fabulous job, even though I, every time I see him, I give him the business.
Well, thanks. I'll pass it on to him. He appreciates that. You know, he takes a lot of pride in his work. He had two, his staff, two recent retirements. So we've had turnover for his staff. Dave Richards retired last fall, and we actually brought on Stefan. And then now there was another recent retire, actually Doug, he was a servant employee when he retired just this July, and we just filled his position. So he's fully, Dave is fully staffed again, but he's actually, for these past few months, been down a staff person essentially, and still doing the great work he does.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I had one question, and then just a couple comments. So the, what is it, the KEEP? It's the KEEP Fund or the, oh, the REAP Fund. I don't remember. The REAP, sorry. $15,000. So is that $15,000 total for all employees for tuition reimbursement?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And that's not professional development? You know, it's kind of like, it's, it is tuition reimbursement if they decide to go back to college or any, any classes or continuing education. That's the fund. Okay.
Yep, correct.
So I don't know how, and, and I understand that we have a lot of, some difficult budgets coming up, and we're not in the clear, but that, I would really, really, really like to find ways to really build that fund. I think continuing education and tuition reimbursement is just super crucial. And I, I've benefited from it myself, and I don't know if I could go, I could have gone back to school to get my master's degree if it wasn't for my employers helping me with that. It took five years, but it doesn't matter. I got it, and I got the help. But that is just super important. So that's just something to keep, I don't know, between the back burner and the front burner. But I think that's so important to be able to make something, a healthier fund for our, our employees for that.
Yeah, I appreciate, Mayor Rick Gonzalez, I appreciate that. And, you know, and had talked to City Manager Rodriguez about this, that we need to actually be more intentional about regularly increasing that fund, because it had, it had languished, I think, for too long. And we know that tuition goes up, and it's really, like I said, the, our employees utilize it and do appreciate it. And like, for example, our police officers use it, because under our contract, we have something called College Incentive Pay. So it's an incentive for them. But they, they then have, you know, this educational background that's really helpful for the work that they do. And same with, again, with firefighters now that we tweak the program so that non-accredited training can also, they can apply for funds for that. So now they can also use the fund, and previously, they really hadn't.
So, so with this program, Pam, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, are you done?
Go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
So with this fund, it's 15,000, isn't that a lot? But, you know, if, if, if all our directors took a project management class, that maybe tried to see if it could be done here in the city, you know, would that, would that include this 15,000?
No, Councilmember Garcia, no, that would really, I mean, for any professional development and training, I mean, if there's training or professional development, each of our departments have a line item in our budgets that we have set aside for that, too. So that's really different than, and REAP stands for Richfield Employee Education Fund. So again, it's for employees who are pursuing further education that is related to their job. The department director has to approve this. So, yeah, so they work with their directors before seeking, and it's a reimbursement. So they, they request to be able to, and it's up to $2,000. And so they request it, and then they go through their course or whatever. They provide us with, you know, documentation that they had spent the money on the class, that they got a passing grade, and then we reimburse them up to an amount of 2,000.
Okay, thank you.
And then lastly, I just wanted to give a huge thank you to you, Assistant City Manager Demetranko, for your leadership and everything you've been doing, and to all of your team. So I think of your department as like the foundation in the frame of a house. You guys keep the city staff and the city, giving them the tools they need to keep the city running. And I just think of all the different groups that you reviewed with us and the exceptional work that they've been doing always, but especially now in, in the midst of COVID. I think of the DEP Reg Department and the leadership under City Clerk Vanderhoos as well, and how they have just pivoted and have had to think of, you know, how do we provide excellent customer service? How do we shut down? How do we open back up? Do this safely? Attend to people who are angry, frustrated, and just, I know they've been working around the clock. I've heard staff and residents tell me how much they appreciate the staff out front and how welcoming and helpful they've been, how people like the fact that there's greeters out there helping them navigate. So I just want to give a huge thank you to that department. I remember you being down, an HR manager, when we lost Justin, and how difficult that was, period. But then on top of it, during a crisis situation, and multiple crisis situations, and that that was a really difficult transition, on top of having to make so many new human resource policies and respond on a policy level to everything that was happening with COVID as well, in the middle of all of, all of these other things. Of course, the work of, of the City Clerk Vanderhoos, who has also not only been working on the DEP Reg stuff, but also our elections in a time of COVID, in a time of, you know, concerns that we have with voter security and things like that. Then we have that new Equity and Inclusion Coordinator, again, another addition of things that will continue to help moving us in the right direction, but something added to your plate that you don't normally have. And then, of course, there's the communication team with Neil and Kate, who have also had to just constantly pivot and provide the services to all the staff and to our community members during this time. And then, as Councilmember Garcia talked about, our great folks doing the building services. So I just want to acknowledge your leadership, Assistant City Manager Demetranko, also the leadership of your whole team, because you guys are the engine that kept, has been keeping our city staff moving forward. And it's looked seamless to our residents and to us, but I know that it's been at a huge cost, and it's been very difficult. So I just want to acknowledge that and thank you and your whole team for everything you've been doing.
Mayor, thank you so much for those. It was greatly appreciated, and I will absolutely pass that on to my staff, because I think that really helps for them to continue to hear that this, you know, sometimes days are really hard for all of our staff, and it's nice to know that, that people do see the work they're doing and appreciate it. So thank you.
Yep. And I forgot to mention IT, which of course has had to get people out remote and do things that they've never had to do in such a short timeframe. So. Any other questions, or can we move on to the next department? Okay, I think we're good to go. We can move on to the next department. Thank you.
All right, that would be me, and I need to share my screen. Okay, this is the Finance Department, which is basically the, probably the smallest department in the general fund, fairly newly created. It's only a couple of years old. Two divisions, Finance and Assessing. Our budgets have, show a pretty sharp increase in 2021, and that is due to what Pam said. We, we absorbed our share of the building services charges and things like that. So we've jumped from 673,000 to 743,000. Part of that is a little bit, to a lesser extent, the increase also is our assessing contract with Hennepin County. They have had some larger-than-normal increases the last couple of years, as they've taken over the homestead application process away from the city. Just kind of our expenditure history, it's fairly, fairly flat. Do have an uptick here in 2021 because of the, the building services charges that we're taking on now. Some of our budget highlights, Finance Division, we maintain all financial records of the city, HRA and EDA. We've continued with our GFOA budget and cap rewards. At our last bond issuance, we reaffirmed our AA+ bond rating, which is an excellent bond rating. That's just below AAA. And as aforementioned, we absorbed our share of internal building charges. And you know, assessing, the major cost here is the assessing contract, Hennepin County programs, the annual property assessment within the city, and we are responsible for all the special assessment processing here in the city. That's pretty much, that's everything for Finance. We don't do a whole lot. I mean, well, we're not very large, but we do a whole lot. You know, we process payroll, process AP, responsible for the budget production, responsible for the annual audit, responsible for processing the capital improvement budget and plan documents. So that's pretty much everything we do here up here. My staff has worked very hard. We've had a lot of changes due to COVID. We've gotten from a lot of paperwork to a lot of electronic work, in terms of invoices, in terms of payroll processing and things like that. So I think that's it. I'll, I don't know if anybody has any questions. I'll try to answer them.
I think you do, I think you do a heck of a job, Chris. I tell you, you know, just to look at all the, all this budget pages, it's just incredible how, how, you know, you've done such good management and, and, you know, and it's, and it's made it clear, and you show, you know, where the money, the revenue and expenditures and the whole works. But it's, it doesn't seem to me like it would be an easy job. So I really commend you, because, you know, you really put it together in such a way that it's readable, it's understandable. And, and I, and I think it's, it's important that we all share what everybody else is doing, you know. And so these types of meetings are just, just great, and thanks for your leadership, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Director Regis on Finance? Okay, I believe not. All right. Thank you so much, Director Regis.
Thank you.
We can move on to the next department.
That's Public Safety, so I'll share my screen here. So Jay Henthorn, Public Safety Director, Chief of Police. It's been a tough year for us, as it has throughout the city. For our expenditures, Public Safety is divided up by three different divisions. Support Services, which is managed by Jennifer Anderson, our Support Services Manager, which is public health, licensing, the Police Department, and then Emergency Services, which encompasses the Emergency Operations Plan, Reserves, all the things that we do preventively in the city. One thing I'd like to point out is if you if you look at our 2020 adopted versus our 2021 proposed, there's a difference of about six hundred and almost fifty thousand dollars. Out of that, the body cameras, the embedded social worker, and also the position of the video specialist is in that amount right here. And that's an increase of about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That relates to about an additional 3.5% of an increase above and beyond the 3% that normally what we're allowed to budget for. So that that's a significant increase based upon those three things that we're adding to the budget. So I'll explain that more as I get through my budget slides here. Members of technical difficulties. So our division expenditure increase. As Chris talked about, in Public Safety, we have a lot of personal services increases for 2020 that reflect the collective bargaining agreement step increases. We have roughly 20 employees that are going through step increases, which is pretty significant when you have a staff of about 46 people. We now have to participate in funding of JCPP with Hennepin County, which is a significant sharing fund cost. We have the increase in professional services due to payment for Logis maintenance and software updates. Also increase in health insurance, workers' compensation, and para. Also the increase in providing funding for the embedded social worker, the added position of video or police video specialist, which will run all of our squad camera, body camera, data practices requests, and things like that. The implementation of the body camera program and data storage in the cloud, and also increased expenditures for COVID-19 response, and also civil unrest. And obviously, after the wake of the George Floyd incident, the civil unrest has been very costly for Public Safety in the city to respond to that. So I just want to cover the body camera program costs, because we have been working on this for the last year. Before implementation, anytime we look at this type of technology, I can remember back when we implemented our new radio system. And when we look at these projects and they're significant dollar amounts, we want to make sure that we do our due diligence in preparing those proposals, but also look at the best deal and the most cost effective way we can do it for the city. So back in 2019, we were given a proposal from WatchGuard, and we looked at several different body camera manufacturers from Video View to also Exxon, which is more of the popular camera, to now WatchGuard. We have WatchGuard body camera or squad cameras in our squad cars. At that time, we were given a proposal of 48 cameras. However, it was an older version of a camera that had already been out on the market about six to eight years. When we refreshed the proposal, we were introduced to a brand new body camera, which is obviously more HD focused. It can view more when it's on the officer's person and is more technologically advanced than the old version. Both cameras include three-year warranties. We didn't have a storage option on the first proposal. We would have to go through Logis, which is a cost of roughly about twenty thousand dollars a year. With the current proposal, even though we're paying for the storage, it's cloud storage. So it's it's a tad cheaper than what it would be to go through Logis. The big difference is we don't carry ongoing costs throughout our budget for the next four or five years, obviously not knowing the financial situation that we're going to be in in 2023, 2024, maybe even 2022. We're paying for everything upfront, which is going to be a significant cost savings. So we would not have any ongoing storage costs until 2024. We also did not have any extra batteries in that quote for each officer. We work 12-hour shifts. The battery life for each battery is roughly eight hours, so the officers have to change out batteries. So we were given 40 batteries extra provided in the quote. I talked a little bit about the Logis costs each year for storage as mentioned above. And we have no costs that would continue with the program until 2024, until the warranty and storage bundle would would come off. So that's a significant cost savings to our yearly budget, the fact that we're paying upfront on our costs. So when we look at the dollar amounts, we're roughly at 48 cameras in the old system. We're at that price that we talked about in the past in study sessions around 132. And then the storage costs, you get about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars just to pay that upfront. So with 50 camera, the batteries and everything in the cloud-based storage is a lot cheaper to go in this pay upfront bundle than it is to get into the second year of storage, the third year of storage. So the first three years of the warranty and the storage cost is about a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Working with WatchGuard, our body camera provider, we were able to get a whole bundle upfront and not have to pay anything for over four years for about four thousand dollars more than this price on the old camera system. The new cameras are significantly a little bit more expensive, they're more technologically advanced. We're getting a severe discount by paying upfront by about thirteen thousand, four hundred and two dollars. But also working with our our manager of the program with WatchGuard, we were able to get additional significant costs due to the fact that we were going to pay upfront. And I believe we got another ten thousand dollars off of that. So, um, right now, we're slotted at about 60 to 90 days from implementation. With what's going on nationally and locally, several other agencies are also looking at deploying body cameras. And so we're about the fourth or fifth agency in the queue for WatchGuard to have our body cameras cameras implemented, which would put us about right at the end of the year of 2020, and that all officers will be outfitted with those body cameras. So it's it's significant cost savings, but also an improvement on the technology that we're going to have. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Wayland?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chief Henthorn, do we know, will after those first three years, are we then expecting the ongoing costs for storage? Obviously, the position will cost the same as the old proposal, but the the storage costs, are we anticipating that those would then be about twenty thousand dollars a year after the three years? Or we don't know yet?
We're anticipating, Councilmember Wayland, thank you. We're anticipating that cost. However, this way benefits us a little better, because we have things rolling off our budget in 2022, 2023, and in 2024. So our WatchGuard squad cameras will roll off our budget. Our radio leases will roll off our budget. Those are pretty two or three significant items that will roll off. So when we have to pick up the warranty and storage costs for the body camera, we won't have those other things on our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from councilmembers? I had a question, Chief, could you, uh, could, oh, and are you still continuing with your presentation on Public Safety?
No, I can, I can stop.
Oh, okay, but you still have more to go, right?
Correct.
Okay, I have a question. Can you just say it again? So you were saying that we could, we're looking at implementation of body cameras at the end of 2020, right?
It could, yeah, we were told by WatchGuard probably anywhere between 60 to 90 days, it could come sooner. I talked with the representative of WatchGuard, Steve Dobell, today, and and we're the fifth, fourth or fifth agency in the queue for implementation. So my guess, it will come before the end of the year.
Got it, thank you.
Unfortunately, I don't have a confirmed date. It's just sort of a ballpark based upon where we're at.
Thank you.
If you look at the slide here, our Public Safety budget is pretty flat, as Chris talked about.
I missed Councilmember Troutman has a question, sorry about that. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor, and sorry to interrupt, Chief. I just wanted to make a small communication request before we moved on, just because there's been so many, so much community conversation about the implementation and the timing of the of the body cameras. Would would you or your office be be so kind as to to keep keep the council updated? Because I'm sure we'd love to be able to communicate to our constituents as you as you begin to get firm dates that we could share those those firm dates or if we shared it directly with the community or if if there were things like we're six on the queue and they're projecting by the end of the year, but then, you know, something something comes up, that that information, being able to disseminate that would be really helpful. But thank you, thank you for for moving forward with it.
Oh, thank you. No, most definitely. We can, um, I'll work with Jason Schatz at our IT specialist, and and we'll come up with a a timeframe. Once we get that narrowed down with WatchGuard, and I can pass that on to the council.
Much, Chief.
So our Public Safety budget, it's pretty straightforward. As far as Director Regis talked about this, we really haven't had too much of an increase other than the 3% over the last several years. We're right pretty much even. In the Police Division, we've always, over the last six years, focused on alternative hiring practices. And I think that's aided us in diversifying our Police Department with 24% officers of color and 17% are female officers, which is at the national average for Police Departments. We've applied for and received pathways to policing grants. This last one, we received over twenty-five thousand dollars. We use that to help offset the cost for Officer Sammy Gonzalez and Cadet Karina Lola to help us with those costs. We had to shut down most of our community-oriented policing due to COVID-19 early on. So some of the things that we normally do each year, Safety Day, Night to Unite, Citizen Police Academy, programs like that, we had to shut down. We've increased our transparency and openness regarding the following. I sent out a letter to the community at the wake of the George Floyd incident in Minneapolis. We made our use of force data to the public, and we're working to update. I've talked with our representative from Police Strategies, who does the use of force database. And we're training a multitude of people to get up to date as quick as we can to get that information on the dashboards so that we don't fall further behind. We posted our department manual online. We are all caught up and revised our department manual, policy and procedures, excuse me, to comply with the recent legislative changes that the legislature put into place due to police reform. We anticipate that there will be more as the legislature reconvenes next year for a fuller session. And we'll definitely make those changes. We hired one new police officer, which is Officer Sammy Gonzalez. We also had to conduct proactive details and patrols over the two weeks of civil unrest that we had to deal with in the wake of the George Floyd incident. We also all had to provide protection over the last week, excuse me, during that timeframe. Those are unexpected costs that we were not anticipating. Fortunately, we made cost-cutting measures when we started with COVID-19, so we were able to absorb some of these costs that we did not anticipate with civil unrest. Our crime trends, part one, crimes are the serious crimes, your robberies, your homicides, things like that. Again, those are trending down since about 2016, 17. Part two crimes are your thefts, theft of motor vehicle, vandalism, those are also trending down. Obviously, we don't know what we're going to see in 2020 with our stats until we get through the full year. Due to the 10 to 12 days of civil unrest, we did have some incidents of attempted burglaries and things like that, that may spike our stats a little bit. But it's trending up maybe about five or 6%, so hopefully that trend continues. And we will not see, you know, any significant spikes. Calls for service, we've averaged around forty thousand calls for service over the last several years. We dipped down here a little bit in 19. I anticipate that probably will be either a little lower or at the same amount for calls for service for 2020. Our Support Services Division, we have one CSO, excuse me, moved to our Police Academy in June 2020. That was Officer Sam Gonzalez. We have our CSO positions fully staffed as of August. Jennifer Anderson, our Health Administrator, remains a care team member, or care team member, excuse me, seasonal code enforcement tech position. We hired through June to August of 2020 to keep up with our property maintenance program. We've always had a successful seasonal code enforcement program. We're roughly at about 96, 97% compliance, which obviously keeps the city looking very nice. Public Health, our COVID-19 response has been excellent due to our relationship with Bloomington Public Health and the work that Jennifer Anderson has done and city staff has done as a whole has made a big difference. We've had some personal schedule changes due to licensing being shut down due to COVID. So we've lost some revenue there. And also the COVID-19, the business licensing fee impacts as we did not have the traffic and and due to the COVID-19 and some of the shutdowns. So this was brought up at the council meeting the other night, the Minnesota Board on Aging and Department of Human Services dementia awareness grant that Jennifer received, and she is working on. We also have participated in the COVID-19 community testing event at Partnership Academy, but also at Bloomington Kennedy in collaboration with the City of Bloomington, City of Adina, and Bloomington Public Health. Our Emergency Services Division, we continue to grow in engagement of our Community Emergency Response Team volunteer residents. We reinvigorated our amateur radio group, our ham radio group, about five years ago, and that's really starting to take off. So we have a lot of residents within our community that participate in that. It's a volunteer group. They do a lot of work on the side with amateur radio. We provide a traffic and security control at community events. It covers police reserves, uniform and equipment maintenance, and also coordinator compensation for our reserves and our CERT team.
Jay, I wanted to ask you, after after Charlie left CERT, who took his place?
Uh, Councilmember Garcia, Sergeant Eric Lamley is our new CERT coordinator. So he does all the CERT trainings and things like that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Um, if you remember, we replaced all our outdoor warning sirens back in 2018, 19. They were over, some were over 60 years old, and were starting to fail. And we were repairing them as we went along. But now we have all sire, all brand new sirens within the city. We have seven sirens located throughout the city. And so that's a significant cost as we prepare to pay that out till 2028 in Emergency Services Division. Extensive COVID-19 mitigation and execution of our community response protocols in public health, but also Emergency Operations Plan. COVID-19 event with Partnership Academy, I talked about that. Um, COVID-19 event with Partnership Academy, I talked about that. Um, one thing we did not anticipate, um, is we participated in logistics of serving food, water to the State Patrol, National Guard, numerous other counties during the civil unrest. Um, we had those resources located in our community on MINDOT property. So, um, we assisted with that. Um, and obviously, uh, have that continued partnership with those agencies. The new technology, uh, there is the, the newest of the new WatchGuard body camera that the officers will be wearing. Um, it will be worn on the chest and can easily be detached by pressing the silver button and then the battery can be, um, replaced. Uh, it's very unique. It has what they call a fisheye lens right here. So that it gets more of a panoramic view in HD capabilities, um, which is different than the old propulsive that we receive. Um, and the old camera, we also implemented iCrimefighter. And iCrimefighter is a mobile evidence management solution that brings mobility and efficiency to our officers' work life. The service allows our officers to utilize their respective department cellular telephones to collect, upload and retrieve digital photographs, video footage, audio recordings and other digital evidence directly from the scene. Um, which is a lot different than what we've normally done. Um, we've used digital cameras and, and recorders and things like that, which can be cumbersome and very expensive to the city. Um, this solution replaces the need for those digital cameras, USB drives, any CDs, audio recorders and other dictation software. So, um, having this program has really allowed us to get rid of some of those other digital devices that have been very costly. Um, due to either having to be replaced and/or, um, you know, broken while on, on shift. So, um, that has really changed as far as the cost saving measures we've been able to implement with iCrimefighter. So, that is all I have and will be, uh, taking any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Questions from council members? No, sounds like none. Um, I just want to say thank you so much, Chief, for the presentation and for your leadership. I know we connected earlier today. Um, I know it's been tremendously hard for our officers and for our entire community. Um, and that, that your department has particularly had a very stressful past couple of years. Um, and, you know, I do think, you know, we are going through the civil rights moment of our generation of our time. We are living in that right now. Um, we're seeing it with COVID. We are seeing it with the civil unrest. We're seeing it with the stark racial inequities in every single area of life, um, a, and across the board. And so I know that our police are very involved in that work and leading that. And the things that you've reviewed with us, I really do think are setting us up for that future to really, as a city, as a police department, as public safety. Um, and as a community, those are the tools. Those are going to be some very important tools for us to really take that head on and keep moving forward. And as stressful as it's been, I think you've had tremendous leadership in leading your officers, leading all of us, um, and, and moving forward in that work. And I, I believe that we will come out stronger as a community and as a city. Um, if, and I do think that we are going in that direction and I know it is difficult, but I, I want to say thank you for your leadership in that work, um, and, and putting these foundational pieces in place to keep that going forward.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
I agree, Mayor. I think that was very well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wayland.
Yeah, along that front too, I just wanted to say, and this isn't really a, a budget consideration as much, but you mentioned the, the increased transparency and communication and I have, I've really appreciated that. I know it's been a, and will probably continue to be um, a kind of a, a tense point or that there's a lot more being asked than ever before, but I appreciate with, with the letter, with the FAQ, with the dashboards, um, just that we're doing, I, I think many of the things, especially like that the FAQ highlighted, that your letter highlighted. We've been doing good work. Um, you've been doing good work for years and I think continuing. Certainly there's areas to improve, but continuing to, uh, I don't know, promote, advertise the good work that we have been doing, I think is, is also really important. So I appreciate the, the increased, um, efforts around communication and transparency.
Thank you very much.
And if I could just jump in, I just wanna, I want to thank you for the investments that, that you've made particularly in this budget, while we're talking about the budget. Um, their expenses and, um, in, in a time of contraction, I appreciate you, you know, walking the council through those, but um, not just, not just that there were, we're, we're spending more in certain areas, but I appreciate um, the strategic, uh, implementation when it comes to the, the senior social worker that we're hiring and the JCPD funding. And the body cams, those are all really key, um, uh, investments and the budget, your budget reflects that. And I just wanna, I just wanna say, say thank you for that. Um, and, and thank you for making those investments.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we will move on to the next department. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, Mike Dobish, Assistant Chief in the Fire Department. I am, uh, gonna get this rocking and rolling here. With any luck. All right. So, uh, our budget in, uh, twenty twenty, uh, the revised budget, uh, went down a little bit. Um, only because we weren't able to get people in places that we were hoping to as quickly as possible. Um, but we are looking forward to, uh, getting our battalion chief, uh, in place, which is the, the big jump, uh, in our personnel line item in the twenty twenty-one budget, as well as some of the other charges, uh, and services that we have. Uh, those really come from, uh, an internal lease program for some of the life-saving equipment that I'll talk about in a little bit, as well as our fire station alerting program. So those were where the big chunks of money went. Uh, COVID-related calls, this is really here just to show you that COVID is across the city. As Chief Anthorn mentioned and, and, uh, city manager, um, mentioned, we've been experiencing, uh, the COVID, uh, calls since March and uh, currently I believe there's eight hundred and eighty-three calls or cases that have been documented in the city. Of those, we were on at least a hundred and eighty-four of them, uh, at some level. You can see here that our fire call volume continues to kind of go up a little bit. Um, we're, you know, there really is no new way to start fires. Smoking candles and cooking are still the top three. And, uh, we'll continue to see this trend kind of move slowly as we go forward. Um, and the fires happen all over the city and, and that's really what this is showing. In two thousand nineteen, there wasn't really a corner of the city that was, uh, free from, from having a fire. We'll look at some of the loss and save information. Uh, so in two thousand and nineteen, we had a couple of small fires in, in high value properties, uh, which allowed us to, to show a huge save of a hundred and ten million dollars plus. Um, and really that's due to our, our rapid response. So within those structures, most of those were sprinkled and we were able to get inside quickly, uh, complete the fire knockdown and then clean the, clean the scene up very quickly, shutting, shutting the systems down. So we were able to make that happen very quickly. A big part of our job is EMS. It's about, it is seventy-four percent of what we do. Um, and over the last ten years, we've seen that increase twenty-three percent. It is certainly a huge part of our mission and, uh, we take our training for EMS very, very seriously. You can see our calls across the city, uh, for EMS. Uh, obviously where we have population density, our senior high rises, uh, our multi-housing, uh, down in the four ninety-four corridor. Those are the, where, anyplace we have those, uh, the population density, we obviously are going to see more calls. A total call volume, uh, over the last ten years, we've seen it increase about sixteen percent. Uh, you can see the trend line this, there. Um, this is certainly one of those things that we're going to continue to watch. Um, but our crews are able to respond right now and, and take care of the problems. And here's just a snapshot of all of our incidents over the last ten years, um, which really is similar to the two thousand nineteen uh, graph that you, or picture graph that you saw. Um, again, you know, it doesn't change much. The, the density drives our call volume. So I'll just wrap up with kind of the highlights, uh, for twenty twenty, uh, what we've accomplished so far and in the last part of nineteen. Uh, the, we implemented the Ellegard, which is the heads-up CPR device, um, and the Vitals app. Uh, I will tell you that the Ellegard, we were the first fire department in Hennepin County to implement the Ellegard, which is, uh, like I said, the heads-up CPR. Um, that particular piece of equipment was, uh, credited with saving Chief Kewich's life, uh, in his first heart attack in Edina. Um, he was able to be resuscitated using that. Uh, in his second cardiac arrest event, uh, he was not placed in an Ellegard, but, uh, he was reclined in the seat of his, uh, of his car, uh, which put him in the heads-up position. And if you ask him directly, he believes that that is the reason that he did not have any damage and was able to be resuscitated. Um, I'm excited, uh, go ahead.
No, I, I just, I just said, that's great. That's wonderful. I, it's, it's so impressive because you know, you're out there among, among the public when all these tragedies happen. And you're able to, you know, to spring to action when there's, when there's a significant fire. Um, it, but you know, you're really, it's very impressive how you've kept, you, you've got high standards and you've done, uh, e- everything that, that we can think of, you know, in terms of, of staying right there. And then, and, and we miss, um, we, we miss Wayne, of course, but you have done a great job. And, and I just, you know, hats off to you because you've kept everything working well and going smoothly and, and believe me, you know, that's, that's certainly pre-appreciated, Mike.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. I appreciate that. Uh, I, I'm excited to announce that I, I should be, be able, should be able to announce a battalion chief next week. Um, the three candidates have completed their leadership assessments and I'll be meeting with each of the candidates, uh, over the next few days. And my goal is by the end of next week to have that person named. Uh, I'm looking forward to bringing somebody else into the office so that I can start to shed some of the responsibilities that I currently have. Um, we did establish a lieutenant eligibility list in two thousand nineteen and we'll be doing that again, uh, for our captains in twenty, at the end of twenty twenty. Um, I will tell you that, uh, local twelve fifteen has been very busy. Uh, they were able to give a hundred and eighty-three coats, uh, to STEM students, uh, last year. Uh, and because of COVID, uh, they're not going to be able to do that this year. Uh, all their fundraising activities for Operation Warm were not able to be hosted. So, um, unfortunately that won't happen, but I know they're looking at hopefully getting back into that in twenty twenty-one. Chief Anthorn mentioned the COVID mitigations. Uh, certainly Wayne and I were active as part of the core team. Uh, when, when we started spooling up the city's response, uh, and we continue to be active with the core team and hoping to help make positive progress, uh, as we work through the pandemic. Um, one of the things during the pandemic that was a great hit was the birthday patrols. Um, and I would certainly just tip my hat to, uh, Kelly Nguyen, uh, Neil and to Brad Drain in the, in the police department. Uh, those three really took that program to the next level and it really gave us a boost within the community. Uh, I, I, I can't say enough about that program. It, it was a huge, huge success for all of us. Um, and then certainly the, oh, go ahead.
I was, I was just going to say it's really heartwarming that we're doing something like that. I mean, you couldn't have a better presence and, uh, or greater significance than, than taking care of birthday patrols. I mean, that is very nice and I'm sure the, the public and, uh, that utilize that really appreciated it because it, it brings people's spirits up and it makes it all seem a lot more community.
Yeah, it was a very popular program. Um, and when we ended it in, in July, uh, there were a few angry people. Uh, but they understood that as we were trying to get people out and about, uh, and starting to normalize things again, uh, they understood. So. And then lastly, uh, Chief Anthorn mentioned the civil unrest, uh, the fire department staffed up as well. Um, we actually, myself and, and, uh, some of the firefighters actually got to go out on patrol. Um, we weren't pulling people over, but it was very interesting to see cars out there, uh, without license plates and we get to call dispatch and then we'd watch the police department respond, uh, and take care of just talking to those people who were probably here for, for not very good reasons. So, a, and with that, I would pause for any questions.
Any questions from council members? Councilmember Supple.
Well, it's not really a question. It's more of a comment. Um, I just was really, um, delighted when I was looking over the materials about all the succession planning that you're doing, like when you're planning ahead for the lieutenants and the captains and the battalion chiefs. Cause I think that's good to look into the future and kind of plan ahead. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. We are, we are certainly aware that we need to be doing things to, to, to keep the very smart people that we have in the organization trained and ready for the next steps. So, thank you.
Councilmember Wayland.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was just going to ask, um, I'm excited about, I know we've been talking about the battalion chief position for a while. Um, do you, and I know, um, with Chief Kewich out, um, their role in the short term might look slightly different, but, um, can you just give another, maybe the thirty-second to one-minute version, remind us of what, um, I know they're doing some, they'll be doing some fire prevention work, but just remind us what their role will enable us to, to do.
So really that person is going to become our inspector. And, uh, so the battalion chief i- is really designed to be, um, a risk management person. So within the city, they'll be working with the citywide safety committee, uh, internally. They'll also be working on inspections externally. So all the inspections and our new housing, uh, and all of the inspections that, uh, Chief Kewich had been doing and now I'm doing. Um, as people are building in the city, the sprinkler inspections, fire alarm inspections, all those things would, will be done by that person. Um, our hope is to get them up and running on plan review so that they can actually do our plan review. And then we would actually probably change their title to fire marshal. Um, so they'll have all of those pieces encompassing what they're currently doing.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council members? Nope. All right. Thank you so much, Assistant Chief. And we can move to our next department.
Thank you.
I think that's me. Uh, let me share my screen. There we go. So, uh, before I go through this, you know, um, take some notes if there are any things that you think I'm missing or things you think could be improved upon next year. Shoot me an email afterwards. Uh, always good to take your input, um, to, uh, improve how we do our presentations for you. Uh, so obviously I'm giving the community development, um, budget presentation. I'm John Stark. I'm the community development director. Community Development currently has twenty-one employees, uh, seventeen full-time and four part-time. Sorry about that. Uh, just giving you kind of an update on how our staffing has changed over the last couple of years. In late twenty eighteen, we did add an additional building inspector. Uh, in twenty eighteen, the planner position was also added to the budget, uh, but was not implemented until this year. We're actually, we advertised for the planner position, uh, the, the. The the position posting closed last week. And we really haven't had somebody in the planner position since Melissa Pellman became the Assistant Director in 2017. So that will be great to be back up kind of to full staff with our on the planning side of things. Eight of our employees are primarily funded by the HRA or EDA. We've got three divisions, Administration, and you'll see in a second that that's kind of like a housekeeping more than anything else. But that's got two full time equivalent positions in that. Planning and zoning, 2.5 FTEs. And actually, I'll go back to Administration. That that includes Mert Link, the Community Development Accountant. We're the only department, I believe, to have our own department accountant. You know, what Community Development does is the financial aspect of it is pretty complex. So Mert is really an important aspect to what we do. And then Latonya Dubois, our Administrative Assistant, is also in that. Planning and zoning, 2.5 FTEs. That's we have a new Assistant Planner, Nellie. If you've watched the Planning Commission meetings, you've seen Nellie. And that's again, the open planning position, and then half of Melissa's time is spent on planning and zoning. And then our inspections division, which is the largest, which is nine full time equivalent position. That's that's headed up by Rick Brenier. And he's got four inspectors and four building inspectors. There are also two housing inspectors that are under Melissa Pellman, and then some administrative folks keeping all that moving along. Here's the the total budget for each of the divisions. I'm not going to go through the line items for the each one because I'll do that separately. But as a total, you'll see 2020 revised is 1,650,000. And then that's an additional 47,000 next year. The 2020 revised is being increased by a little over 1% over the 2020 approved. And that's due to increased inspections costs. The 2021 proposed budget is, as I said, one point, almost 1.7 million, which is a 4.2% increase from the 2020 approved budget. This increase is also due to increased internal and external staffing costs due to high demand, primarily inspections. The good news, and we'll get to that, is that there are revenues that will cover this and then some. Previous year's increases, you know, ranged in 2019. That's when we did add the new inspector. So that's the bump of 10%. But generally speaking, anywhere between 2 and 3 and 1/2%. Many of the more visible things that Community Development does is through the HRA. You know, the big, the redevelopment projects are very always very contentious, always get a lot of participation. A lot of our housing programs as well get a lot of attention. And the affordable housing work we do as well. Almost all of the budget expenses on the city side are salaries, benefits, or non discretionary costs. I say 90 plus percent. We really look hard for anywhere in here that's discretionary, and it's very, very little. I would think it'd be less than 2%, to be honest. We are seeing historic development highs that are resulting in more in complex land use applications. And that's the nature of land use applications. They they, in my career, they've just gotten more complex every year as development has changed. And the the demands on development and the needs for density have increased. We've seen vastly increased building permits and demand. COVID-19 has not reduced demand for us at all, but has made service delivery more challenging. You know, we're still doing all of our inspections. We're doing it in different ways. We're still, you know, trying to hold neighborhood engagement and public engagement. But we're going to have to find new ways of doing it. So as I said, everything is more challenging for us, I would say. The big question is, will we see a slowdown in 2021? And I don't think anybody knows the answer to that. We had seen the increases in housing coming for years. And I've been telling you guys, I think for a few years, that that's going to continue. Nobody knows whether there's going to be a slowdown. Personally, I I think it's going to plateau. I don't think it's going to drop off, though. So I think it's going to just flatten out. Our Administration Division. And this is where I said, this is more of housekeeping than anything. It budgets for all of our labor and benefits costs. But then those costs are credited by the other divisions, by the Richfield HRA and the Richfield EDA. The budget also pays for the department's utility services and insurance. And so really, that's all we're left with. The 2020 revised budget is 0.7, so less than 1% increase. For 2021, it's a 3, 7% increase. That's due primarily to benefits increases. And so again, you'll see here that by the time when you net out the personnel costs, it really is just utilities and insurance that are left here. Planning and zoning, this is headed up by Melissa Pellman. They are the staff liaisons to the planning commission. They maintain and amend the comp plan. They proactively update and amend land use codes to remain relevant. We we always keep kind of a back burner list of things we want to improve. So anytime you see things that that fall under planning and zoning that you think could use improvement, let me know. We'll add it to the list. That's a constantly evolving list and something we try to tick off items on every year. And then processing land use applications, and you see all these come through you. So you know what that's all about. The Planning and Zoning Division, here we're showing you the expenditures for personnel and for other services. Actually, I go into a little more detail in the next slide because I want to break that down a little bit more for you. We're we're primarily funded through the general fund. The planning and zoning fees really don't pay for the work that they that they do. A big part of that is most, much of the work planning and zoning does is for single family homeowners and for our apartment complexes. And we really want to keep our fees reasonable so as not to be a cost burden. But that's something we can revisit if, you know, fiscally, you'd like us to go a different direction with that. So here's the breakdown. Salaries and benefits, 83% of what we do. Professional services, that's planning consultants. That's something I think we we've kind of scaled back on over the years. I don't know that scaling back on that is always a good idea. I look at at the consultants helping us with our our planning almost as research and development. And if you're a car company or if you're a computer company, you know that research and development costs, you know, bear fruit in future years. And that's how I feel about that. Information Technologies is a little over 3%. Professional Development and memberships. Again, that's something I I really want to keep my eye on. That's been shrinking, shrinking, shrinking over the years. Want to make sure I I I'm a cert, I was a certified planner, AICP certified planner. I let that go several years ago because I didn't want the department spending money on me when I'm an established employee. And we were, we didn't have enough money to spend on the younger employees coming up. So I really want to keep our eyes on that. The planning and zoning budget history you see here from 2014 to now. The average annual increase has been 2.2%. So we've really tried to keep a tight belt in this division. As I, the 21 budget is a 3.25% increase over 2020 approved. So that falls within kind of the parameters we were we were asked to meet. Our inspections division, they enforce the the building code. And I would just say, so Rick Brenier heads up this division. And you'll see in a minute what the revenues coming off of this division are. It's it's pretty impressive. I I would be surprised if council members ever really get to meet or talk to our building inspectors and our housing inspectors. That's something I'd like to remedy. They do such tremendous work for the city. You know, when COVID is over, I would urge you to go on a ride along with our building inspectors, go out to a construction site with them. They're kind of, they're kind of the hidden, a hidden gem in the city staff. They do construction, education, and licensing. I'm sorry, was we going to hear something?
No, I was I was just going to say, Rick, Rick has done an outstanding job, you know, being being the leader of this of this group. Because he's, you know, inspections, because he's he's very well versed in everything we do. And and, you know, that's something, I mean, he's he's valued for the way he not only takes care of business, but the way he communicates with the public.
Well, he communicates with the public so well, and he just has such a high level of integrity in his work ethic. He he works more hours than he should. I it's one of my jobs to get him out of the office, get him out of, get him taking his vacations because his work ethic is just so strong. He's been with the city for well over 25 years. And, you know, we'll have to start thinking about succession planning with with Rick at some point in the future. That's probably a few years away, maybe five years away. But it's something we we it's he's going to be a hard person to to fill. The point of sale inspections, those are done by Jennifer Grandy and by Dean Tran. They do six to 800 of those annually. That has not slowed down. People are still selling their houses, and so that has not slowed down at all. The way we're doing our inspections has changed, but we feel like it's still working well. And then rental licensing, there are approximately 5,500 units in the city. Every single one of these gets inspected at least every other year. That's a lot of work. Our we have what are called provisional licenses. That's kind of double secret probation. So if if a landlord is not a great landlord, they're in a provisional license, in which case they get inspected annually. So our inspectors are out on the road every day. They know more about our housing stock than anybody else. And I really rely on them to give me a indication of, you know, is the housing stock starting to decline? Because we really obviously don't want to see that. And and they have a lot of good indicators. The way we talk about it, it's it's like your dishwasher and your sink at home. If after a meal, if somebody if somebody piles one cup or one plate in the sink, instead of putting it right away in the dishwasher, the sink is just going to become a magnet, and everybody's just going to start putting their dishes in the sink, and they're not going to make it into the dishwasher. That's the same way we talk about inspections. And we're always looking for that one dish that went into the sink and is is going to start maybe, or it's kind of the same as the broken windows theory. We set revenue records last year of 2.2 million in building permit revenues. And that's just phenomenal. And I'm going to go a little bit over our revenues in a second. Again, you know, you you have all the budget worksheets and you were able to see the line items. This next slide shows us there's not much, trust me, Chris Regis looks for every single place he can he can find a penny to cut. And there just isn't any. We run very lean here. One of the places where we need to spend money that we have not is in our building permit software. And it's kind of a catch 22 because we have to do some research on what the right software is. And we're just too busy to do that research. And so it's really going to take a slow year before we can really jump into doing that business, the the permit licensing software. And then probably, we're going to be coming to you in a slow year where the revenues are down, saying we need to spend 10,000, 20,000, 30,000 plus on on new software. So just be prepared for that in the future. The expenditures you see here, you know, they they've gone up, you know, 3, 4% a year over the past many years. You know, when there has been a bump, it's been because we've been pulling in external inspectors more. When we get busy, there are people out there that can help us out that are consultants. We've also had some employees with, I mean, part of going into inspections, people in inspections come from the building trades. And everybody in the building trades has problems with their knees and has problems with their hips, all of those kinds of things. So our inspectors, you know, they are sometimes out with knee replacements or hip replacements, and we have to bring in outside help. And so you see that jumping into our some of our consultant costs there. The revenues history, you know, this bounces around a lot more. I think I would say maybe a normal year now would be about 1.3 million. The last couple of years. 2019 was our highest ever. Over $2 million. 2020 revised, we're putting that at 1.6 million. I think it's going to be higher than that because as of as of a week ago, we were at 1.4 million, and we still have stuff coming in. I think it's probably going to be close to the 2 million again. So 2020 proposed, we're always conservative in these numbers because we just don't know. But that I would, that's what I would consider back to normal. So with that, I would take any questions or comments people might have.
Questions from council members? It sounds like we have no questions. Thank you so much, Director Stark.
All right. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I did want to say thank you for what Community Development did as far as the rental assistance and the small business assistance during the COVID outbreak, because I know that has been huge, and I think it'll probably continue into the future. So thank you for all of that.
Well, you're welcome. And again, that's part of the HRA and EDA, so I don't really cover that. But I put our, the HRA and EDA budget presentations are on the HRA's website. And so you can always go look at that. And just as a preview, I, we are going to be coming to the EDA next week and a week from Monday, seeking additional COVID business loans to try to get some more business funding out in the community. At some point, there will be more rental assistance, COVID rental assistance. We just don't think the time is is yet for that, but we will be coming back to that as well.
Councilmember Channing.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't get my my video started quick enough. But Director Stark, I just wanted to thank you. You you manage such a large part of our bureaucracy, but you just simultaneously manage to be so incredibly flexible and responsive. And it's just, I it's incredible. And so I just want to say, I just want to say like a very cold throated thank you and a lot of the revenue and development opportunities we have, we have because of your leadership. And appreciate just just your 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 whole team's responsiveness to to when so many things are changing, not just in COVID. Things things were changing and have changed in 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 housing in our community, and we've seen growth and all those things that have required flexing responses well before the pandemic. And so because you guys were already in that mode, I just want to just recognize, obviously, lots of staff. All we're we're all dealing with with this and doing well, but I just wanted to just wanted to call that out and say thank.
Well, thanks. And, you know, I think Finance Director Regis gave you our employment total. It's like 219 or something like that. And for Community Development and the other 198 people. I mean, it's all, every single person that works for the city of Richfield loves the community. And it makes it makes us want to be flexible and want to help in every any way we can. So a big thank you to the community.
Councilmember Garcia, do you have a question or comment?
No, and I, I really don't, but I, I just hats off to the, well, I think the, the three leaders in that, in that division. You know, Mr. Stark and Melissa Paleman and Rick Rehneer, you know, and, and the people that work under them or with them. They've really done a heck of a good job, and this has been a challenging job, too. Because anytime you work with the public, you know, it, it just, you really have a, a big job, you have to, you know, you have, you have to bring a lot of tools in your toolbox, and, and they're able to do that, and they're able to do it, you know, in a, in a way that shows a lot of pride in their work.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Okay, I think we can go to the next department.
All right, I forgot to unmute first. You can hear me? Okay, well, good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Krista Nash, your Public Works Director.
Award-winning public.
Yeah, right, the national award-winning, yeah. Thanks for that. So as I always say every year, we're in the quality of life business, and our department has a core of over 50 employees, where we typically will increase a good percentage in the summer months with our seasonals. However, this year we did not do that. We have four general fund divisions. These are the services we provide. And then we have our three utilities, and we also have our services, and we have just over $21 million budget between all those divisions. For our general fund, this is kind of an overview of the, all of our general fund divisions. Engineering will stand over here as the second line with the large increase from the adopted to the proposed. That's due to some delays in construction, and I think we've, we've talked about this last year, too, but that we delaying 65th Street kind of put a gap in that. Historically, engineering's been funded through our capital projects, and so we introduced our municipal state aid maintenance money to this division. And so to fulfill that gap through capital projects, we're using our municipal state aid maintenance funds, and that's, I have two totals at the bottom that reflect that. But overall, 57% of our general fund is for personnel. And essentially, the department as a whole's been kind of functioning business as usual, although we have halted things due to the pandemic, like professional development, sent us to serve services have been spotty at best. They, they stopped initially completely, and then they show up maybe once or twice a week now. And then, like I said, we only hired about a third of the seasonals that we typically would. And then that, these two totals at the bottom, the reason I put that second line in with the MSA revenues reflected is just to show you what the bottom line is for the general fund. The difference between charging to a project and using MSA funds, MSA reflects then as a revenue, where the projects wasn't direct, we would directly charge projects. So in summary, for the general fund, the revised 2020 budget shows a decrease of overall of 1.6%, and then a 3% when it proposed compared to the adopted. So for admin, this is just kind of our expenditure, where things fall. We have over a third of our Public Works Administration is funded through the capital projects or through the three utility funds. But essentially, this is just funding personnel for admin. And engineering, we've had a lot of, well, quite a few, I'd say, staff changes over the past couple of years, and that's reflected in the bouncy numbers. And then there's the MSA thing I just talked about. So not much happening here. I wish I could have a highlights sheet that showed that we obtained the funding for the 77th Street underpass this year, but that's yet to be determined. So we're gonna keep our numbers up. Street maintenance, including forestry, about more than half of the budget is just for personnel. And the other big projects would be our street lighting, our motor pool expenses, contracted services like tree planting, stump grinding, our sentenced-to-serve contract, things like that. You'll see, if you look at the funding, there are, there is MSA maintenance money in this budget, too, that's been consistent. That's always been there, so there was no reason to show any. That streetlight user fee goes directly to pay the streetlight bill. That's that actual, you see in 2019. That's what streetlights costed in 2019. So we're, we're getting barely anything over that, and it fluctuates. And so it's kind of a direct pass-through. And then our stormwater, our stormwater utility labor charges, stormwater. That stormwater pays for our street sweeping. So when the guys are street sweeping, they charge their time to stormwater directly. And these chart here, the top one of the bar charts, this is a month-to-month summary of our requests for work that come directly from the residents, and so this is above and beyond what we would typically be assigning our, our staff to do. The top graph shows our monthly volume of work orders in 2019. So a couple of months where we're reaching about 400. The red bars is utilities, the blue is operations. That graph on the, the middle graph, that's just kind of breaking it out a bit more. The big tall bar there is forestry. And the second one is lights and signs. So if you're ever out and about, and somebody says something about a stop or a, a street light that's out, we need that to be reported to us. So I just got one the other day where somebody said it's art, and when is it ever gonna get replaced? And I said, it was replaced that day, because it just so happened. We usually, if we get, you know, pile up a few requests, and then when they have enough to go work for the day, they'll go replace the bulbs or do whatever they get. So just so, you know, we don't drive the streets at night looking for streetlights that are out. If, if you see one, if you hear one, please have them notify us. They can just go right through the website. But forestry is always big. And we get, and this year's been particularly big, which isn't reflected here because it's 2019, but we have one forester. So when we get a call to go look at a tree, we have one guy that will do that, and so he gets backed up. He may take a while to get out there to finally see it, even though it's on his list. But it's been, I think just because people have been home this year, they're finally getting around to calling the city about their tree concerns. So he's been extremely busy this year. And then that final chart left is that jump from 2018 to 2019. It was right in there that the water meters just are failing, like consistently all at once. And so we've been, we get 100 calls a week for those, and we're still responding to them. We still getting lots of calls, and we have a one crew dedicated to meter change outs at this point in time. Our central garage, we, we do all the purchasing and maintenance for all the city vehicles, and consult other departments on their needs. 14% of this budget is our personnel. We have three full-time mechanics. And every year, we try to keep the purchases about the same amount, but that does fluctuate. This is what we've purchased in 2020 and what we're looking at purchasing in 2020. I don't know if there's any questions, like the longevity of some of this stuff. We had two empty sidewalk plows. I actually have a slide to show you this, but the plows that we had, we had for well beyond their useful life, and that's because our mechanics were able to keep them moving. But we got two empty sidewalk plows last year, or this year, early this year, and one of the things I wanted to just touch on briefly is our sidewalk winter maintenance and snow clearing, and how that's changed just in the handful of years due to the new streetscapes on our main roads where our sidewalks are. And I, I know I've mentioned this before, but I think last season was the first time we actually sent the crews on the sidewalks out at the same time as our street plows. Historically, we would focus on streets, and then when the streets were done, it could be three days, let's say, before we'd get a sidewalk cleared on 66th Street. And it wouldn't be that clear, because people are talking on it, and of course, the county would put their snow on the sidewalks, it was directly behind the curb. So these are streetscapes. We're clearing those sidewalks, and that's part of that equity and transportation piece that we're trying to deliver, that service. I mean, it would drive me, I mean, it was always so frustrating to know that we didn't prioritize sidewalks, snow clearing, like we did streets, snow clearing. I could never understand why those plows were, I mean, I ended, I understood it because you were fighting against county snowplows on the major roads, but I'm happy that at this time, we're doing it, and it's working well, and we're actually getting really good feedback on it. So that was my one highlight that I had identified today. And then our utility funds, we're managing about 15 and a half million in expenditures between the three. Water use is continuing to decline, or the cost to produce it is not, it's actually increasing. But, and I wanted to point out the 28% increase in water. That's basically due to, it's our capital outlay, our water main lining that we're doing on 65th Street, and what we did under 35W, and also some principal payments. It also includes like a refinance that we did on a 1.3 million dollar bond this year. So that is shown in there as a number, and it's basically for informational purposes, and that kind of explodes that budget, but the true operating expenses are actually down 6.2%, and they continue to be down the following year, and that's that was making adjustments to trying to keep the rate down 5% for next year. And so the rate increased down. Otherwise, our sewer is just almost essentially a pass-through for, for Met Council's disposal fees, which is down, actually. It went down, let's see, like 200,000 or more for 2021, which is great. And we will just reinvest that into the city's sewer line projects. And then everything's business as usual, stormwater. So our, for our personnel, about 20% of all the funds covers our, our personnel for the three utilities. And most of what goes into utilities is for operational maintenance. And that was all I prepared for tonight. So I'm about, is there any questions?
Thank you, Director Asher. Any questions from council members? Looks like we have none. Thank you very much, Director Asher. We can move on to the next department.
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna be exiting now. I hope you don't mind, but I know that Amy Markle and Phil Moore are, you know, they're next, and, and I appreciate, you know, that, that everyone that has done a presentation has, has displayed, you know, the real, the real love for their positions and their jobs, and, and always striving to, you know, to stay up to standards and to, and to anticipate future, future things, and, and, and working with the public. I mean, there's just so much that we gotta be grateful for. We have a staff that's very, very smart, very professional, and very oriented to making things work, not only for you and me, but also for the, all the residents in Richfield. And I, I just can't thank them enough, because I'm just, the city is the city because we, because of all, all of you people, all of you directors. And it's, it's, we get kudos all the time, and, and you just, you just really shine, and, and we appreciate you all so very much. And I'm gonna exit now, Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Councilmember Garcia, for your words, and thank you for giving us the heads up.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, now we can move on to the next department. Looks like it's with Director Markle.
Okay, can everyone hear me and see it okay?
Yep, we can hear you and see your screen.
Perfect. I'm Amy Markle, the Recreation Services Director, and good evening to the mayor and council and, and staff. And tonight, I'll present the Recreation Services budget. A lot of our budget falls within the general fund, including the recreation and administration budget with Lake Nature Center, recreation programming. And then I'll also touch on some of the special revenue funds that fall within the pool, the ice arena, mini golf, and the pavilion. But we'll start off looking at the fun stuff, and that's some of the projects where we've been able to plan and hopefully execute in the coming month, and two, which are playground builds. It's the first time we've done community builds, but it's a way we're able to provide more equipment by saving the money by building it, and also kind of do a collaborative team approach project across, across our city staff. And next week, we'll be building our first community build at Washington Park, and then at the end of the month at Madison. And we received a grant for a little over $100,000 to help purchase additional equipment. And then we also have it funded through our capital budget. The other playground that you may notice is going in, starting last week, is at South Taft Park, and that was a, a partnership with Three Rivers Park, Park District, and it was a gift from them to the city. So that should be finished by mid-October. So there'll be three playgrounds going in. As you know, we have our off-leash dog area going in at Roosevelt Park, and today we are out with the fencing company, kind of laying out the fence lines. So starting next week, we'll be working on some of the construction of that and hoping to open it to the public early to mid-October. The funding for that project is through capital funds that were set aside a couple of years ago, and we've been able to supplement that with the Roundup program through the Richfield Liquor Stores. And then we also have sponsors from the Richfield Rotary that has helped purchase. With art that they've overseen. 29 poems went in along 66th Street. They put in new art at our Section 8 housing room in City Hall. They participated in a trunk-or-treat, and they've been involved with a partnership with the Hennepin County Library called We Are Richfield. And all these projects are done in partnership, you know, across the city with community development and, and public works. But it's fun to see these projects come to fruition, and in the coming year, we're gonna be creating a pamphlet that people can print off online, but it'll be kind of a guide or map to Richfield art. In looking at our performance measures, the key ones, the first ones are recreation program registration. Last year, we had a little over 29,000. You can see that's down by almost two-thirds. A lot of that is due to COVID. We really didn't have any programming scheduled during the shutdown, and as we slowly come back, we have limited numbers of participants basically due to COVID restrictions. Our Woodlake program visits are about half of what they normally are, and that's really due to COVID, and we haven't been able to host school groups at the end of the school, and but overall, visitation, though, I would say is up, but the formal visits are but overall visitation though, I would say is up, but the formal visits are down. We have the same number. For curling. And one significant grant that we received this summer is from Hennepin County and it, the focus of the grant is to really get kids moving despite COVID. It's been wonderful to have that funding and help alleviate any cost burdens that families may be experiencing. We've been able to help fund videographer. We're purchasing camera equipment for future virtual programs. We offered a free fishing class where kids got tackle boxes and they're all and instruction. We have free ice skating the rest of the year for youth, free mini golf, free soccer camps, free sports to go program. It's helped pay for some of our COVID nineteen mitigation at the farmer's market, including hand sanitation stations. We paid for a hundred and fifty youth to participate in the Urban Wildland five K races and also paid for free youth yoga. And it's going to be continuing to, to be used throughout the year, but it's just been wonderful to have that source of, of grant funding to keep kids active and moving and despite the challenges with COVID. But overall, all of our measures are down, you know, basically due to the pandemic. And I do want to note, one new way that we've reached audiences is through our virtual rec program. And we did a little tabulation and we've reached about four hundred and seventy thousand people through our virtual rec program. So. That's something we're pretty excited about and they're not just clicks, they're actually people that have watched our videos. And if you look at the city manager's report that came out today, you'll see some of the programs, I know there's just a huge diversity with them. We have cooking classes, we have basketball, we have classes for seniors. You know, something for everyone and it's been a safe way to offer something till we could get somebody in person and self-guided programming up and running. When you look at the general fund, you can see our expenditures are down and that is largely due to two positions not being filled at this time. We had Deb Marcus retire from the community center. Right when COVID started, it aligned almost to the day with her retirement. And then we also have a vacant athletics position that we're hopeful to fill in twenty twenty one. We also haven't filled our intern position. We haven't spent funds to mail out a citywide recreation brochure just because of the ever-changing guidelines with COVID and what we can and can't do. It's been easier just to offer a flyer looking at a month calendar at a time and then also a decrease in supplies. And looking at revenue, that's been significantly impacted by COVID as well. And we're just, the programs we have been able to do were limited in the number of people we're able to have participate. Do you want to say though, any of the programs that we have been able to offer to the programs like our mitigated summer camps at Woodlake? We've had just an overwhelming response of, you know, all the camps were full and people were really excited to come back and be able to do, to do something this past summer. And in twenty twenty one, we're hopeful to get things back to normal, but we are anticipating some revenue decreases really due to probably some continued impacts from COVID nineteen. One area of our, our budget is our recreation administration. There's not a whole lot in that area. But you can see it's just a slight increase because we've had an increase in our utilities budget by sixty six hundred dollars. And that will also go up in twenty twenty one. It'll be six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. We've been able to offset some of it by not printing the, the flashy brochure that goes out for like fall and winter rec and we're anticipating we, we won't get back to that normal mailing till we're kind of on the backside of COVID. Another part of the general fund budget for our department is recreation programs. You can see our expenditures are down by about twenty six percent and that's largely due to just not having our summer seasonals that help with our playground program, decrease in supply expenditures. But we are hoping that next year we'll be back on track and there's a slight increase of about one, one and a half percent for twenty twenty one. Our revenue is down by about sixty six percent and that's again largely due to COVID and a decrease in program registrations. Some of the revenue we have been able to bring in is coming from field rentals, from largely softball and soccer field rentals and some program registrations. We're expecting that revenue will be down slightly next year, really till we get things back to normal on the backside of the pandemic. Another area of the budget is Woodlake Nature Center. You can see their expenditures are down and that's already due to decrease in program supplies. They're anticipating things returning to normal. Then there's also several new staff at Woodlake. The revenue side. About two thirds. So about sixty seven percent and a lot of it just has to do with the decrease in program, program registration. And then you need to Woodlake, it's a lot of field trips. You know, no schools.
Mayor. Mayor.
Oh, can you guys hear me? Okay.
Mayor, I'm, I'm wondering if Amy, Director Markle, if you could maybe turn off your video while you go through your PowerPoint. Your, your internet connection is unstable, so you're pausing for long periods of time.
Oh, no. Is it working now?
It is now, yes.
I thought that was just me. Okay, I wasn't sure. Sorry.
I apologize. Should I, do you want me to repeat anything?
I don't think so. I think there was, it just pauses.
Okay, sorry about that. And then another area of our budget is the recreation services, our, our special revenue funds and that includes the ice arena, pool, mini golf and the shelter. And these are funds that the revenue kind of goes back into the same fund. And all of them have been significantly impacted by, by COVID. I will say, looking at the big picture, if there was ever a good time to do a refrigeration project, it has been now because we have been planned to be shut down and for some impacts with the arena budget. And so it, you know, the timing of the project was, was good in that way. But you can see next year, the, the funds for the refrigeration project will be taken out. Twenty twenty. So that significantly has impacted revenue. We also haven't spent as much either. And then the other area I'll show the details of is the mini golf and the shelter. And one thing to note is we are expecting a strong year for the ice arena in twenty twenty one. So we have a positive fund balance of a little over three hundred thousand for next year. In looking at the, the ice arena, you know, the revenue side of things have been affected mainly because of COVID nineteen, but also the refrigeration. By the twenty first of September, but right now we're, we're finishing up the roof. And then our HVAC system and the ADA component will also go in in the coming month. But you can see the fund balance for the ice arena is down about a hundred and fifty thousand for twenty twenty, but back up again in twenty twenty one. The outdoor pool, it was not open this season due to COVID nineteen. We are fully anticipating being open in twenty twenty one. And that fund balance is, is positive. You can see though, just to have the pool, it's been revised, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars has been spent and a lot of it just goes to maintenance. Lawn care, our winterization of it, mechanics, utility. Hopefully will be. And then we also have facilities fund and that is our mini golf course and our picnic shelter. You can see there's a decrease in revenue because we haven't been able to have shelter rentals this summer as the pavilion. That's the opportunity to meet the pavilion. And we also have seen some loss of revenue from mini golf. Revenue just being down probably due to COVID nineteen. But we are anticipating things getting back to normal next summer for, for both of those. And we do have some money that's coming and that's largely due to our lease with the Fun Wheel Rentals. So we make about sixteen thousand dollars a year with our lease with them. And I'm not anticipating they'll be making over two hundred thousand because at that point we get.
Thank you, Director Markle. Any questions from council members? Councilmember Whelan.
I'll just say a quick thank you to how flexible you've been. I really appreciate, I mean, I kind of the refrain of everyone has been about COVID impacts, but I think especially recreation has maybe been most. I mean, it's just completely shifted what you're able or not able to do. So thank you for rolling with that. I think that the hundreds of thousands of people engaging with the virtual programming is amazing. And so thank you to you and your staff for all the work there.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. Any other questions or comments from council members? Great. Thank you so much, Director Markle. And I think we have liquor stores last with Director Philmore. I don't think we can hear you, Director Philmore.
I'm here, I'm just trying to get my.
Got it. Sorry about that.
My PowerPoint thing here. Neil gave me a telex version this afternoon, so this is the first time I've done this. Okay, like I said, Bill Philmore from Liquor Operations. It sounds like maybe I've done this the first time, but this is my thirty ninth budget presentation. So I've got three categories that I want to talk about. The most importantly is sales, that's our engine. And year to date, ending August thirty first, we're up in sales two point one percent for a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. Total aggregate, total of eight point one million. As you see here, the sixty fourth and Lindale store is down twenty one percent and the seventy seventh and Lindale store is down twenty nine percent. That looks much better than it did about a month ago. We're starting to regain sales. We were, we were closed for forty seven days at Lindale and seventy five at the seventy seventh and Lindale store due to COVID. We had a lot of staff members that had incomers that they had to take care of, family or they were a risk. And then at the seventy seventh and Lindale store, we also embarked on some remodeling that we had kind of put on the back burner for a while since we were closed, we thought we'll do it. And that was, that was completed at the end of June. As far as sales history now, we've, we've increased every year for the last three years. Two thousand twenty looks like we'll be right on, on target. I had a little, I had forecasted a little, I was a little generous in forecasting and Chris and Katie and I got together for our budget review, our initial budget review. And we revised it to like a five percent increase. And I think that can be done because sales are steady. And, and we're going into the, the Vivier season. Another thing, it may not seem really related, but it is related, is our mitigation actions for COVID nineteen. The core group put together a list of guidelines, said, Bill, if you want to be open, this is what you have to do. And our staff really, really stepped up and they've done an excellent job. And it's, it's been kind of a bare bone staff because we had a lot of people that were gone. We social distanced, we limited customers. Thanks to Dave Conrad and his crew, they put up plexiglass shields. We're doing, our stores are probably the cleanest they've ever been. We don't handle cash, no lottery business to passing back paper and things. All our vendors come in before hours or after hours. And we are operating at twenty, twenty eight hours less per week. So despite all of those factors there for COVID and an additional, for quite a few weeks, we were giving people what we kind of call combat pay authorized by the city manager of two dollars an hour and increase for the people that stepped up and were here and worked, you know, really worked hard. And despite all of that, we are up in sales, we're a tad behind in profit. But I think that can quickly, and that's really catching up. I think we can, we can, we can really move on that in the next two, the next three months, four months, excuse me. We have no major improvements scheduled for two thousand twenty one. We finished up on our forecasted capital improvements at the shops, the seventy seventh and Lindale store. That, that project turned out really, really well. And like Pam was talking about before, Dave Conrad and his crew came through, helped us tear down the store. They, they helped us, they painted, we helped paint. You know, we did, the store looks wonderful and I think that the customers really appreciate shopping in a nice shiny kind of upbeat store. The other things that Conrad's crews did, which I'm so thankful for, is during the civil unrest, they helped board up and take the boards down in the morning to, to open up for business, put them back up in the evening. And they, they, they were really helpful along with public safety. You guys are the best. Now, that's really all that I have. I don't know if anybody went over to the seventy seventh street store, but I mean, it is really an uptown looking store and we're really proud of it. And I, and I'm so happy that all of our improvements are completed, our major aside from maybe some, some mechanical problem that's coming up in the future, I don't see any major outlays. If anybody's got any questions. If anybody's got any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Director Fillmore. Any questions from council members?
Um, quick question here. Um. I know, well, first of all, thank you. I think um the COVID reaction has been great and impressive that. Sales are still doing so well. Um, I also, I think you're exactly right that the the shops all look amazing now. Um, and so I'm, the work the last few years to get them all. Um, updated and everything is going to make a a huge difference for a long time to come. My question was around the the cash policy and maybe this is an ongoing conversation for a different. Space, but um, I was just curious if that, especially now as we're getting more guidance that it, it is. Um, COVID is spread more through the air and less through surfaces. Um, I know it's not. I don't know. I guess I'm just curious if if the the policy on no cash. Um, if there's any chance of that changing or if we have a timeline on that. Um, because I know I've, not a lot of residents, but a couple of residents have have reached out and been frustrated by that.
Yeah, what, um, this is something that we've brought up to the core group and uh we made a little bit of effort. This week to begin cash at one store and that's our lowest volume store, the shop store. Um, you know, and that's, it's all based upon what the core group um feels is is proper for us to do. Uh, like, like I said, I want to stay in business and I want to do things right. And if, if whatever they say, we'll do. Uh, and I, and I agree with you. Um, you know, there's been a few people that that have um questioned it, said, you know, Target's taking cash. Cup Foods taking cash. Why aren't you doing it? So, uh, yeah, it's been, it's hard to answer those questions for the public.
Mayor.
City Manager Rodriguez.
Um, thanks for your question, Councilmember Whelan. Um, that is. Um, one of the, my concerns from the very beginning, I, I, I did want to keep our state, our staff and our, and the public safe. And so we did suspend cash, but it was a concern because of the unbanked. And so we are um starting back with a pilot for one store to see how that goes. And then I hope, hopefully we can extend it to the other stores. But um, but there are health concerns with it. I mean, that was, that is the reason we did it in the first place and. Um, you know, Jennifer Anderson is still uncomfortable, so we're, we're doing our best to try and balance it.
Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and um, and um, thank you, Director Fillmore. Um, and because Edwina is gone, somebody should insert a joke about free samples here. Um, but I. Quick question about. How the. What, like an extraordinary volume um in the, during the COVID um shutdown area? And I was just, I, I, no, no, uh, no criticism or anything, but I was just wondering if, did we do a high volume but low profit there? Or have things tapered off otherwise? Or was it not actually as busy as it seemed to be? I was just curious.
Um, you were cutting out a little bit, uh, Councilman Troutman, but I think I know what you're asking. We were super busy uh starting about the second week in March, oh, for about two weeks. Um, I think it was kind of the same thing with disinfectant, the toilet paper. People thought that we were going to be closed and were stockpiling. Uh, there were people that weren't working and it was busy. Uh, it is, it is leveled off now um to a maintainable. And I, I'm glad now because it, it was the point where we had lines outside the store. We were only allowing a, a certain amount of people in. And uh, you, you never want to make, put people out, um, you know, and be inconvenient. So it's, we can handle it now and we're still doing a fair amount of business. And our Penn Stores has really, really gone uh to another level. Um, you know, we remodeled that store uh back in two thousand eighteen. And it's, it's, it's gained so much momen- so much momentum in sales. We've got a, a super staff over there and I think we're um getting a, a lot of business from our neighbor to the west. So, uh, because I heard that their, their sales were, they weren't where ours are. Did that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Um, n- n- no, I was just, I was just curious if I understood you right when you said profits were down. And I was just wondering if we did a really high volume and then it leveled off. I was just, I just didn't understand that, that comment. I was just curious.
Well, I think some of the profit, uh, the, the being off. Maybe some of the, the payroll charges, that extra two dollars and um.
Great.
So I, you know, I think it's going to uh regain, we, I think we'll, we'll regain that very quickly. We, I've seen it the last couple of months.
Yes, girl, that's, that's a great investment um in, in staff that stepped up in a hard moment. So I'm glad you're able to do that.
Thank the city manager.
Thank you, city manager.
Any other questions from council members? Great. Thank you so much, Director Fillmore, and I will pass it on to City Manager Rodriguez to wrap us up.
Mayor, um, I don't have much. We are, we've booked on pretty late tonight. Um, next steps is September twenty-second council meeting. And the preliminary levy will um be on your agenda as well as the budget. Um, and various fees. Um, Director Regis, do you have anything more?
Uh, no, I don't. I, I, all I was going to comment on was, was uh September twenty-second meeting. So, no, I don't.
Councilmember Whelan.
Just wanted to say a quick comment. I, we've talked about this already, but. Thank you to everyone who played a role in giving all of the previous budget work sessions going. I think it was super helpful, especially in a hard year like this, to have those previous conversations where we could iron out like. Where, how do our priorities line up with what the financial reality is right now? Um, I appreciate this meeting, there's a lot of, of specifics to get through. And so I just appreciate so much that we're already on the same page in terms of. Like big picture, what um, what to make happen with this budget. So thank you to everyone for all of the prep work that went into that and having a, a more extensive process.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. I'd just like to echo that as well. I remember when we first started our budget conversations and before that, going into this year, Katie and I had talked about. Um, the importance of really doing our budget for this upcoming year in a very different way, way where we could really. Work um side by side with our department heads and staff to understand the pressures that you all are facing. Because um, we know that the decisions that we're making for this upcoming year in the future. Will determine how, how quickly and well we bounce back and will greatly impact our, our residents. And I know it's been extremely difficult, but I really do thank you as well for all of the work that you've done. Because I do feel like we have achieved that. We have exhausted all of our options. We've looked under every stone. We've looked at multiple different options and I think the path forward. Um, has really been done as a whole team. So thank you to the city manager for that, to all of the department heads for engaging in that way. Because I know it's been very difficult. Do we have anything else? And on that note, can we all go home? We all are home, but you know, end our session. All right. I will end our session. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.